At first, I'd like to await a motion to leave the non-public session and to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? June, will you please take the role?
I sure will. Assistant, uh, sorry. Mayor McCackren.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councillor Tabor.
Here.
Councillor Cook.
Here.
Councillor Denton.
Here.
Councillor Leelock.
Present.
Councillor Bagley.
Here.
Councillor Moreau.
Here.
Councillor Lombardi.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
And before the Pledge of Allegiance and before we get to celebrating everybody that's here in this room, I'd like to take a moment to remember Michael Edwards, who lost his life on this last Sunday. He was a dedicated chef at First Rusty Hammer and then at the State Street Saloon for over 30 years. If we could just remember him and the dedication he paid to supporting all of us. And now it is my, I had a mentor, Jim Splain, who said, "Daglin, maybe you shouldn't lead the Pledge of Allegiance all the time. There are folks that can do a lot better job." And reaching out to one of those folks, I realized Cub Scout PAC 166 would be up to the challenge. I see them here somewhere, don't I? Right over there, in the back. I'm going to ask them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before I do, I just want to point out that they've participated in Scouting for Food, a national Boy Scouts of America event, for many years. And then this year, PAC 166 collected over 1,600 food items for local food pantry, and that was 500 more than last year. So a round of applause for... Now, please, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you want to come right to the front?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys.
Your Honor, I'd like to suspend the rules and bring up Item 8, Recognition and Volunteer Committee Reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So you might notice a few more people in City Hall today, and as we were in our non-public, we were trying to figure out what all of that noise could be. But it's the noise of our future, really, here. And we are so delighted, not only that we have the opportunity to congratulate you on your victories, but really to show you that what you do and the effort that you put into being teammates, to being coachable, to representing Portsmouth City Soccer is incredibly important to the city of Portsmouth. Now, not every one of you is a resident of Portsmouth, but you are all going to, one day, hopefully, play for the Portsmouth High School Clippers, and we are incredibly proud of this. And I would just, you know, it's important to be here. It's important to win state championships. But I would just also want to say that of all the things that I've ever learned in life, I can tie back to, you know, doing it on a practice field somewhere, to spending a lot of time in a lot of car rides with my dad and with my mom, and the times that I got to talk to them. For me, it was rowing, a sport that is far less popular than soccer. But it's an opportunity to mean what it means to be a teammate. And ultimately, what we're trying to do in the city is to be good teammates to one another, is to work hard for one another, to do our best ourselves, and to put ourselves out there, win, lose, or draw, to make sure that we're making each other the best teammates that we can be. So tonight, you guys are certainly leading by example. I believe that Portsmouth, New Hampshire, is becoming title town when it's either soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, basketball, skiing, golf. There are so many opportunities to be excellent, and we want to celebrate each one of those opportunities to be excellent because we want you to know just how important all of you guys are to us. And so, just a bit, for those that don't know about Portsmouth City Soccer, it was founded in 1997, has grown to include 450 youth players from Portsmouth, Newington, Newcastle, Greenland, and Rye. I think all of you are here tonight, across 32 teams. You compete in the spring and fall. They play their home games at community campus, turf, and alumni Wentworth Fields. And as your coaches will say, Portsmouth City Soccer fosters a love for the game by encouraging skill development, teamwork, and sportsmanship. And so, it's our goal, really, just to celebrate all of you guys, and hopefully, when you're out there practicing, you recognize and remember that there's a town or city of 23,000 people that is incredibly proud of each and every one of you, and will celebrate every accomplishment that you have throughout your career, you know, whether it takes you away from Portsmouth or whether it's right here in the high school. We're so incredibly proud. So with that, I am going to ask each one of these teams, when I read out your team, to come up, and we're going to stand in front of the podium here, and we are going to celebrate you and your parents, if they're here, can come take pictures. And then, you guys, we negotiated this, so you'll stay for the entire presentation after. Is that... No. You guys can leave after we all get one big group photo at the end. So first, presented to the 2025 Portsmouth City Under-11 Girls Black Soccer Team in recognition of the state's division championship, the team finished the 2025 season with a record of eight wins and two losses. Congratulations to Alexander Anatasha, Anna Clark... What's that?
Alexandra.
Oh, Alexandra, and I am sorry you have a last name like mine. Nah, Garuki, Anastasia Milatikova, Anna Clark, Avery Wallert, Charlotte Neal, Claire Rabado. As a kid with Daglin, Daglin McCackren, I empathize 100% that I'm not getting all of these right, and I have a new appreciation for some of my teachers. Hella Dinan, Emily Perea, Madeline Hillen, Hillian Moxey, Laber Gersky, and Nora McLaughlin. All right, guys. And Coach Chad Hillen, Audrey Laber, Mahil Milatovic, and Matthew Neal. All right. Now we have, presented to the 2025 Portsmouth City Under-11 Boys Maroon Soccer Team. In recognition of the team's state division championship, the team finished the 2025 season with a record of six wins, two losses, and one tie. Congratulations to Nelson Doe, Brendan Henley, Mason Hillen, Wells Lavoy, Grayson Magiano, Douglas McCafferty, Tyler McKinney, William Osborne, Briggs B. Parsons, Edward Schoengold, Cody Schultz, and Cedric Thomas. And to coaches, Kevin McKenny and Chad Hillen. Let's give it up.
Great job, guys.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, they will. Right now, my niece is beating up her little brother, and I'm like, "He's going to get revenge on you, and you're not going to like it. He's going to be huge."
And now, presented to the 2025 Portsmouth City Under-12 Girls Black Soccer Team. In recognition of the team's state division championship, the team finished the 2025 season with a record of eight wins, no losses, and one tie. Congratulations to Ada Vitale, Akira Hoiberg, Avery Brewer, Bree Cook, Brooklyn Truworthy, Cecilia Walker, Harper Borman, Louise Tangway, Lucia Armlinio, Mia Berkowitz, Ruby Robashad, Zoe Demers, and Claire Medros. And to Coach Kristen Truworthy, Dan Jelbert, and Jason Demers. Let's go.
They're like, "Okay, we'll step up." They can't really see the light on their heads.
Yep.
All right. And now, presented to the 2025 Portsmouth City Under-12 Boys Black Soccer Team in recognition... All right, let's go. In recognition of the team's state division championship, the team finished the 2025 season with a record of eight wins, no losses, and one tie. Congratulations to Sam Carter, Ethan Cludier, Isaac Cludier, Connor Herman, Grady Maloney, Carter Perry, Bennett Smith, Deacon Souza Underwood, Teddy Tredell, Jackson Clark, and Illen Dunn Bolos. And to the coaches, Adam Herman and John Tredell. Let's give it up, guys. And last, the amount of 6'7s that I've been seeing here. And last, but not least, presented to the 2025 Portsmouth City Under-13 Boys Black Soccer Team. In recognition of the team's state division championship, the team finished the 2025 season undefeated. With nine wins. Congratulations to Benjamin Nat, Bodie Dyer, Caleb Boardman, Chase Daniels, Fletcher Jackson, Harper Lefebvre, Hayes Kelly, Ian Stoll, Lucas Nunes, Mason Dizet Laurent, Max Levine, Pierce Gillen, Robbie Emery, Tracker Labar Gersky, and Walsh Widener. Jeff Dyer, Dobby Levine, and Tyler Jackson. Let's go.
Yeah, they're 13. There's no 13-year-old girls here, so we don't know. We don't have comparison.
It's just a thing.
Spurred 67 points, and the whole crowd was like, "It's just a thing right now." Yeah. If I stand up right now and go 6'7", the whole place will go crazy. For no reason, for no reason. Hey, is that all I did?
Now, I would love it if, if possible, we could get every team member up, and we'll bring the whole council down for one last picture in front of the dais. Truly, it's a, we do a lot of things in City Hall, and we always talk about, you know, the future, but we very rarely get to see the future fill the hall like it is tonight. We are just so incredibly touched that not only you guys had a great season, not only, you know, that you guys are excellent in your craft and you put the work in to become champions, but that you came out here tonight means a lot. It shows the community why we're working so hard, what we're trying to achieve, and that's a place where you guys get to follow your dreams, achieve them, and come and celebrate them. So you guys are the heart of Portsmouth tonight, and we want to make sure that you guys remember that. So thank you. Let's come take a picture.
May in, 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 in. In or behind.
Guys, make sure you're looking. Boys, look up, look up.
That's pretty cool.
That's a lot of voices.
That's what I'm used to, 11, 12-year-olds. In the spring, at least. When I do 14 and 15-year-olds. Good job. Congratulations. We expect state championships, right? When you get to high school. 6'7".
So I was told that some of the children won't leave until I do one thing, and that's 6'7". I think that's officially killed it for everybody, but 6'7". Whatever pleases the people.
And the volume has already gone down.
What's this thing?
The grandkids on Saturday.
We better get a better soccer.
The boys, at least. The girls' voice, okay.
It's a little quieter.
It's a little quieter. So those of you just joining us here, we have a proclamation now, and then we're going to move on to both public comment and then the first reading of ordinances. If you signed up for public comment and you'd want to speak on the CIP, fantastic. It's also a part of the public hearing where you will have an unlimited amount of time to speak. Still, three minutes is an effective amount to speak, and it's largely very compelling. But we'll get to that in a second. First, the proclamation for Creative Mornings PKX Chapter. Whereas 10 years ago, a small group of volunteers gathered in the spirit of curiosity, connection, and community to launch the Portsmouth Kittery &amp; Beyond, or PKX, chapter of Creative Mornings, with the belief that everyone is creative and everyone is welcome. And whereas, over the past decade, this chapter has grown into a vibrant and inclusive community, welcoming thousands of individuals from all walks of life, including designers, artists, entrepreneurs, educators, raconteurs, and dreamers, who come together each month to share ideas, inspire one another, and build lasting relationships. And whereas, PKX has served as a platform for over 100 local speakers to share their personal stories, creative journeys, and bold visions, fostering empathy, understanding, and a deep appreciation for the diverse voices that shape the Seacoast. And whereas, PKX has consistently embodied the values of generosity, curiosity, and collaboration, offering free events that celebrate creativity not as a luxury, but as a fundamental human trait that strengthens communities and drives positive change. And whereas, the collective energy of this community has sparked new projects, partnerships, and friendships, and has helped make the Seacoast a more connected, compassionate, and creatively courageous place to live and work. Now, therefore, I, Diggle McCackern, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and citizens of Portsmouth, to hereby proclaim November 17th, 2025, in Portsmouth as Creative Mornings PKX Day. In celebration, you can celebrate that. In celebration, in celebration of the 10th anniversary of the Creative Mornings PKX Chapter, and in recognition of its enduring commitment to creativity, community, and the power of connection, may this milestone serve as a reminder of what is possible when people come together with open minds, generous hearts, and a shared belief in the beauty of ideas. Hugs and high fives to you all, and let us continue to gather, listen, create, and grow together. Given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 17th day of November, 2025. Members of the PKX community here?
Yes.
We do. All right. If you would love to come and receive this, and we can take a photo.
I have two cameras, so hang in there.
They cheese?
Cheese.
Speech, speech, speech.
If you wanted to die, I'll keep doing it. It's the least cool thing in the world.
Some people do.
Thank you, guys. Next up, the acceptance of minutes for September 8th, 2025, and September 24th, 2025.
Your Honor, I move to accept and approve the minutes of the September 8th and September 24th City Council meetings.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have public comment. Public comment, again, if you would like to speak at the public hearing, you're welcome to. We just ask that if you choose one, to just stick to one, although I can't compel you to do that. So first, we have Lisa Roble on New Franklin School renovation. And if you would like, again, to speak at the public hearing, we refer you to do so, but you can also speak now.
I'd like to wait and speak.
Okay. Wyatt James on the New Franklin School renovation.
Is it okay if I read Wyatt's use story?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes, there's no reason not to.
I'm Wyatt's mom. My name's Kim James. And Wyatt spent some time writing and then typing this for everybody. Hi, my name is Wyatt James. I live at 1600 Islington Street. I am a fourth grader at New Franklin School. My school needs a lot of help. My teachers are great, but the building is really old. For example, it needs a new gym. The tiles are cracking. Sometimes when I'm playing, I trip. They only wax the floors, but there are still cracks and holes. I wish that the gym was nicer, like the middle school gym, because it's my favorite place at school. The library also needs to be fixed. Did you know the library is also a hallway? We always get distracted by kids walking through during the middle of our library class. It would be nice if it had just one place to come in and out so kids weren't always walking through. Every day, when I am walking through the hallway, there are kids working in the hallway. I think there should be an extra classroom for them. They must get very distracted, like how I feel when I am in the library. The outside of our school needs help, too. The base path is completely covered by grass on the baseball field. Also, my friend Henry can fit through a hole in the fence to the basketball court. The playground in the front is really dangerous. The monkey bars have metal sticking out of them that were fixed with duct tape, but the tape is peeling off. I'm not on this side of the school because I'm in fourth grade, but my brothers and my brother's friends should have a nice playground. Please fix New Franklin School. I only have one more year there, but one of my brothers is only in second grade, and my other brother starts kindergarten next year.
Great job, Wyatt.
I think I'm next on the list.
You are next, Kim.
All right.
It's tough to top, though.
I know, I know. Okay. I'll wait for my. I'm here tonight to express my support for the proposed capital improvement projects, elementary school upgrade and elementary school playground upgrade. As a parent of New Franklin, I really never thought much of the condition of the school because it was very reminiscent of my elementary school growing up. There are watermarks running from leaks down the walls. Kids receive services in hallways. The gym's falling apart, and a kitchen without an oven. And I'm still not sure how they make all the food without the oven in there. But New Franklin has always been its own kind of cute. Last year, I went on a tour to the three elementary schools, and I was mortified by the status of New Franklin in comparison to Dondaro and Little Harbor. I couldn't believe my children's peers were accessing education in drastically different settings. Special ed suites with multiple small spaces with walls and doors for kids to work instead of hallways with people constantly walking by. A dedicated room for band and chorus instead of music being held in a small, traditional classroom, and band lessons in closets and loading docks. A real kitchen. I spent a lot of time at school board meetings ensuring that my three kids can remain in New Franklin School. The faculty, staff, and community are the best. They deserve to have a faculty that is, or sorry, a facility that is safe, up to code, and has appropriate spaces for teaching and learning. New Franklin can't be left behind. I hope the council has toured the three elementary schools and seen for themselves the importance of moving forward with the capital improvement plans at New Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, Nellie Clark on New Franklin School renovation. Would you like to speak now, or at the, you're going to speak now?
I'll just speak now. I've got some soccer players here to take home. So I'm here to speak in favor of the CIP, this New Franklin School renovation. I live at 152 Essex Avenue, and my name's Nellie. I have three kids. I have two children at New Franklin currently, and a sixth grader who just finished at NFS. We love New Franklin as a school and as a community of great people, but as a space, New Franklin is lacking. New Franklin really needs this renovation. There are children getting counseling and instruction in small windowless spaces. The gym is too small to host a PTO, Kids vs. Staff 5th Grade Basketball Game. And in fact, none of the 5th Grade basketball games are able to be home games because our gym is too small. The library, which should be a quiet space for reading, is a cut through or modified hallway. There are plumbing issues that affect two or three of the staff bathrooms that exist and with one frequently closed due to clogging. In addition to the indoor spaces being cramped, the outdoor spaces at NFS need a vision. The K-2 kickball area has huge cracks. The old garden is overtaken with invasive species. The 5th Grade soccer field has nets that are too small with no lines, until we did it ourselves with the PTO this fall. Just like basketball, we're not able to have home soccer games for the 5th Grade soccer team because our field is not up to par. It's simply not fair to these Portsmouth kids to go to school in a space that is too small and is not conducive to learning and playing. The other schools are beautiful, well thought out, with beautiful grounds. They've already had their updates and renovations. And our kids at New Franklin deserve no less. So, thank you. Thank you for supporting these kids and our school.
Thank you, Nellie. Next up, Colleen Spear on CIP Sustainability Committee. Wait, okay. Bill Lyons on Micro Strand of it. Wait or speak now? Okay. Next, and just as an FYI, on the public hearing, you're just going to come up. I'm not going to read your name. Awesome. Lisa Rappaport on CIP New Franklin Reno? Wait. We're getting through this in record time. Elise Gallo, impact fees, staggered terms.
Elise Gallo, I live in Portsmouth. I'm a little premature because I was going to applaud the two new councilors, and they're not here, so I'll wait for January for that. But congratulations for all of you for making it back to the bench. It's a big responsibility you have. I had the pleasure of campaigning for a neighbor of mine, a person of great integrity, intelligence, and vision. And most of you met Tom Rossi and agreed that he would have been a great asset to the board. But I reminded him he doesn't need to be on your board to contribute to it. You liked a number of his ideas, and so do I, so I'm happy to present some reminders. Number one, impact fees. Impact fees help ensure new development pays its fair share for expanded infrastructure and public services. It reduces the financial burden on existing residents and taxpayers, and shifts costs of growth to developers and new residents. It allows the city to maintain quality of life and public services despite population increases. And it can be tailored to match specific impact of different types of development, ensuring fairness and proportionality. It supports your long-term planning, that you'll be talking about pretty soon, and provides funds earmarked specifically for mitigating impacts of growth. And it's predictable and transparent. I've heard say that you already have developers paying some fees that are beneficial to the city, but what are they, and who benefits? I'm fairly sure that if you put those fees head to head with the percentile formula of a commercial impact fee, the formalized impact fees would be the one that citizens choose for transparency and a predictable offset of residential taxes. Rochester, Dover, Durham, and most other towns take this approach. Why don't we? That was number one. Number two, this is from me, and I discussed this with a few of you during the campaign period. I know most of you agree that it's crazy that at any city election, you could have nine new faces replace the ones holding the seats the day before. Most town boards have a mechanism in place to maintain a sense of history and years of experience on their benches. This is both a huge taxpayer benefit and a source of comfort to council members. Every new selectman or council member needs to hear the wisdom of those who have warmed the seats for a few years, and none should be reinventing the wheel at taxpayer expense. So I'm going to ask you to seriously consider an onerous process of staggered terms. Maybe four for three years, five for two years, whatever equation makes sense. I realize that's a charter amendment, but please consult your attorney and get the wheels in motion. I doubt that anyone would have reason to believe that this doesn't benefit the City of Portsmouth in every way. And I don't think I have enough copies, but I have copies.
Thank you, Elise.
Thanks, Elise.
Next up, we have Francesca Marconi Fernald on the police.
Hi, I just want to congratulate everyone who got elected. And now I'd like to bring to your attention the porta-potties that you passed on your way in tonight in front of the PD. That is the facilities that your officers who serve or protect you use. We have wasted too much time and money kicking the can down the road about a police station. 1.2 million in the past year alone. That doesn't include additional increases in construction costs. That 1.2 million equals approximately $100 per taxpayer. By the time we get off our butts, there will be another at least 1.2 million. I feel that we treat our men and women in blue like second-class citizens. Let's get going and finally fix this problem. Police, as well as fire, are foundation-building blocks of our community. Why are we neglecting this? Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca. Next, Emily Robichaud. Wait, okay, all right. Next up, Peter Huda on change and reporting.
Good evening, Peter Huda, Portsmouth. I want to address the proposed change in the city's financial reporting schedule because, as presented, it represents a major shift in practice and does not align with GFOA best practices or with the intent of GASB 34, which together established the national standards for governmental transparency and accountability. The city is able to provide estimated unaudited year-end financial results in September and October. That has been the case regardless of who has served as Finance Director, like in FY '23 under Director Judy Ballinger. These preliminary year-end numbers have always been essential for both the City Council and the public as we enter into the next year's budget cycle. It is simply not possible to make informed financial decisions about a new budget without having at least an estimate of the prior year's operating performance. That basic principle is why past practice existed and why it worked. The proposed approach that would delay the release of year-end information until roughly November 15th, after the auditor completes the fieldwork, this may sound reasonable at first glance, but it fundamentally contradicts what the GFOA tells governments to do. GFOA is very clear. Financial reports must be released as soon as possible at the end of the reporting period. Timeliness is not optional. It is one of the core characteristics of useful financial information. GFOA warns against exactly what is being proposed here. They state that while reliability matters, governments should not delay reporting in pursuit of minor increases in precision. In fact, they say sometimes a timely estimate is more useful than a precise information that takes a long time to produce. That is precisely why the city has historically provided unaudited year-end estimates in early fall. On top of that, GASB 34, in case you don't know what GASB is, is the Government Accounting Standards Board. The foundation of modern governmental financial reporting emphasizes accountability, transparency, and decision-useful information. GASB intends for elected officials to have timely, fund-level data so they can assess budget compliance, understand financial trends, and make responsible policy decisions. Delaying year-end results until mid-November after the budget cycle is already underway undermines the intent and diminishes the transparency. And the timing concerns are not happening in a vacuum. The city was already called out for publicly failing to publish monthly reports since last February. For these reasons, this change cannot be considered as a mere procedural adjustment. It is a significant weakening of our financial reporting standards and does not align with GFOA. In summary, the bottom line is that we cannot build next year's budget without knowing how this year ended. Every best practice from GFOA and GASB emphasizes timely year-end reporting, exactly the practice that proposes eliminates. If the concern is confusion between preliminary and final numbers, the solution is simple. Label the report "inaudited", just as past finance directors have done. Delaying year-end reporting past budget- Delaying year-end reporting past budget deliberations is not standard, not recommended, and not transparent. I urge you not to put this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next is Chris Dwyer on Bohenco Park Sculpture.
Chris Dwyer, 600 Broad Street, representing the Public Art Committee. And you have on your consent agenda a memo from us, and I just wanted to give a little explanation for it because you know that we're in the middle of fundraising for the next sculpture, the Wabanaki sculpture. But we have an opportunity to, with a partial gift, take on yet another piece for Bohenco Park, which is related to the Endeavor sculpture. And this is a partial gift from the Thorson family in memory of Sue Thorson. It's by the same artist who did Endeavor, and it has an aesthetic relationship to Endeavor. It's a functional piece, a serpentine bench, which will be made out of similar materials, will have similar cutouts. And so we'd like to move forward with that at the same time that we're moving forward with the one that you recently approved. And so our ask is for the kinds of support that has been given before, which is from the legal department for contracting, from DPW to help with citing, to authorize us to use some of our trust funds for soil testing and engineering, and then obviously to approve that we will do the rest of the fundraising to have this permanently sited in the park.
Thank you, Chris. No other speakers listed, none on Zoom? We will...
There's a hand up.
Oh, there's a hand up? Separate than any public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is in regards to the ordinance of the second reading for the ordinance of Chapter Six. Is that the applicable time?
No, for second reading of ordinances that have a public hearing, we will have a public hearing separate for that.
Excuse me. Thank you.
It's confusing to me, too. So, next up, we're going to go into the, we're going to go into the public hearings. The first is... Oh, there is a hand. Okay. Linnea.
Good evening. Sorry, I didn't get my name on the list. My name is Linnea Grimm, and I am speaking in strong support of the Municipal Arts and Cultural Banner Program policy that Councilor Cook will present later this evening. While I'm president at Strawberry Bank Museum, I'm speaking this evening as co-chair of the city's Arts and Cultural Commission, which has been advocating for a banner program to highlight arts and cultural organizations. Under the city manager's direction, the banner program would allow local nonprofit arts and cultural organizations the opportunity to highlight the vibrant arts and cultural offerings that are taking place throughout the city. Organizations will donate banners to the city and pay any expenses that the city identifies to implement the program. We think the banner program is important because arts and culture are not just a part of Portsmouth's identity. They are core drivers of our local economy. According to the recent Americans for the Arts Economic Impact Study, the arts fosters 70.1 million annually of economic impact in our community. Supporting the arts through the banner program is supporting Portsmouth's economic health and downtown vitality, and I respectfully urge the council to adopt the Municipal Arts and Culture Banner Program policy and continue investing in Portsmouth's thriving cultural landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Linnea. With that, and seeing nobody else rise for public comment, we will move on to public hearings and vote on ordinances of resolution. We have a first reading, just to get it on, and then we're going to come into the public hearing on the CIP. So the one right after that is when we'll have a brief recap of some of the questions that we heard, and then we'll open up the public hearing. And again, that will not be voted on this evening. It will be voted on the 8th. Before that, we will have a tour of the facilities, but just as an order of operations, that's when we'll be voted on this evening. We will likely extend the public hearing to the 8th as well for other people that would like to speak that are not able to join this evening. So with that, we have the first reading of ordinance amending Chapter One, Administrative Code, Article Four, Commissions and Authorities, Section 1.414, establishing a permanent Energy Advisory Committee.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the December 8th, 2025 City Council meeting. Second?
Any discussion?
Your Honor, this is, the premise of this is that we will make the Energy Advisory Committee permanent, and the benefit to the city will be oversight of community power in that program, as well as our effort to put solar arrays on Jones Avenue and to find energy efficiencies everywhere we can in both municipal government and the community.
Would the expected makeup of the board change, or would that stay the same?
We are going to, we right now have two people with utility backgrounds, one from Eversource, two from Eversource, actually, one retired. And I think it's smart that we have a member, and we put this in the ordinance, who has an affiliation with a public utility.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've had the privilege of serving on this Blue Ribbon Committee with Councilor Tabor, who chairs it, for the last four years, and the city cannot duplicate the expertise level of the members of this committee, and we would be very wise to support establishing a permanent committee.
Councilor Boyler?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Councilor Tabor, and Councilor Cook, for bringing this forward. I think this is a good idea. I'm always a little concerned that we have so many committees and so many commissions and boards, but I think this is going to be a problem. You know, energy, affordable energy is going to continue to be a challenge for Portsmouth residents and Portsmouth as a city, so.
This first reading, second reading will come at December 8th. Anybody can and is encouraged to speak at that time. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next, the public hearing of the Capital Improvement Plan. So we will first start with a recap of Mr. Nathan Lunny, our Deputy City Attorney...
He's got a promotion.
Promotion, promotion. I don't know. Deputy City Manager, Finance, please give us a recap. We're going to jump right into the public hearing, given that there's so many people here, but Nathan, please take us away.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. I was asked to just meet with staff and collect some answers to some of the questions that were outstanding at the end of our work session last week. I would first want to just comment about the New Franklin School project. I know the council has received a number of supportive messages from families in the New Franklin School community about the elementary schools' upgrade project. And just to make sure that the tone is right, I want them to know that the project is in the proposed CIP. That's a nuance that might not matter, but to the extent that anybody felt like they were speaking for its saving as opposed to its promotion, I wanted to make sure they understand that the project is in the CIP as presented, as is the ongoing upgrade to school playgrounds, which include New Franklin. And so I wanted to make sure that folks understood that, that it, there hasn't been any conversation about jeopardy. This is in the proposal. With regard to the Artist Live/Work/Studio Space Study, there were questions asked about deliverables, value-added through this agreement that's proposed, and the possibility of work being done locally by staff. I would tell you that in a conversation earlier today, it was confirmed that neither staff nor commission members have specific expertise in this particular area to perform such a study, and there is expertise, multiple experiences that can be referenced even locally from the group that is proposed in this. And the deliverables would include a feasibility report, among others. I would suggest the deeper explanation would need to be provided by folks closer to the proposal, and there may be some of those here behind me tonight. With regard to the replacement of Marine One, this is the fire department's fire boat. The increase, the change in the cost anticipated for Marine One was in last year's CIP and was discussed at some point then. It involves costing a boat, the costing of a boat that was enclosed to reflect the rescue work being done by our staff and to keep the crews safer and protected from the elements. It's important to note that the new boat, as proposed, would be able to be kept in the water year-round. The current boat is removed in the months of December through March. There was a request for any data on calls. The chief shared with me that in the last two years, the boat has responded to 15 rescues from the water and has likely been involved in others, but because of the way our reporting system codes mutual aid calls, among other things, there are some challenges in refining that data to reflect all of the calls that it's been involved in. Additionally, there was a question about agreements with other communities or agencies, and at this time, there are no agreements currently in place. There was a question that was asked, and so for clarity, I wanted to share that the replacement of Tower Five ladder truck in the fire department was reflected in FY27 this year. It was moved from FY28, but you, the council, voted authorization, bonding authorization for that apparatus back at the October 20th meeting? October 20th? 20th? We included in the CIP this year for transparency and to make sure that folks saw the change that was made and were aware of the authorization. It is reflected in the debt service, beginning not until FY31, when we anticipate we will have taken delivery and made payment for that vehicle. There were a number of questions or comments made about federal funding, and so I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that in the proposed CIP in front of you, in the category of aspirational federal funding, as opposed to federal or state funding, I should say, as opposed to those things that are known. For instance, our police body cams and TASER project is currently receiving over three years a grant of $65,334 each year. That's reflected there. There are three that I would call out that are aspirational that I think our conversation was about. One was $100 of federal funding that would be sought for the microtransit study. Another was $50,000 for the Vernal Pool update. I think in both of those, in both of those cases, two years of federal funding were anticipated as for pursuit by staff, and in the third year of each, there was capital outlay funding requested, anticipating that if we failed in those two years, that in the third year, we'd ask for capital funding. It certainly is the prerogative, if it's the prerogative of the council, that can be changed, and we could instead fund in any of the, either of the earlier years and set aside that aspirational. Beyond that, the only other aspirational, I guess I would suggest, federal funding is with regard to the electric vehicle charging stations, where there are dollars in each year of the CIP that are requested or would be sought from federal, as well as from parking revenues to help fund that ongoing initiative. There was a question about the Greenland Road recreational facility because it came off the CIP this year. It was without funding last year by request, and there's no funding request so right now in the six-year planning horizon of the CIP. There are future phases that are considered, and as those phases take shape, new requests will be included. I would also note, staff wanted me to mention that any bike ped elements or items, excuse me, related to the Greenland Road recreational facility have been shifted to and are part of the priority list under the bike ped plan in the CIP. And then one additional, were questions about assessment of solar array possibilities and potential power generation. The CIP includes right now $50,000 in capital outlay for FY27. That is in support of the Jones Avenue Solar Array Initiative. The city currently has an assessment that was done on city buildings, and that was done by EEI, one of the partners that the city's using, working with. That staff suggests that this is a continuous process. They would start with consideration of those opportunities. Another assessment would need to be done if city land, land masses, land property was going to be included in the potential location inventory, and that would be a different contractor at additional cost later. That's what we have tonight.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
We will have additional council questions after the public hearing. I would just like to note, we have with us members of the planning board, Chairman Schellmann, Tony Covialo, Frank Perrier, and Bill Bowen. For those that, we also have Councilor Moreau and the city manager here. For those that might be new to the capital improvement process, it starts with citizen requests. It moves to the planning board, where they craft and work with staff and deliberate. It's delivered to us in a joint working session and then finally approved by us. So I appreciate the members that are here and certainly available to speak at this joint public hearing if you choose to do so. We will now open the public hearing, and just please state your name, your residency, and you're not going to be limited to a timer, so no need to get nervous around that, but brevity is still very effective in form of persuasion, so hold that in your heart. And if you simply want to agree with something that was said before you, the fact that you're here this evening and have taken time out of your night and away from your families or with your families here avoiding bedtime, it is certainly okay simply to say, "I am here in support of the previous speaker." That, too, is appreciated. So with that, we will open the public hearing. And first person up at the podium to go? Anybody, just form a line and start coming in to speak.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Robley, Portsmouth resident, and I also work at New Franklin as a literacy tutor. And I'm here to encourage you to take seriously the needs and the concerns with the space in our building. As a literacy tutor, I share a space with three other tutors, and at times, we have 25 children in a room with a partition between the groups, trying to instruct children with reading. It's really tough, and around our building, this can be seen in many places. There are people teaching children in closets. There are lessons happening in hallways. We just don't have enough space, and the kids deserve more. The instructors deserve a better opportunity to do their job well, and I really hope that you'll look at what our building has compared to the other buildings in our city. It's not equitable. I've substituted in all of the buildings. I did some long-term subbing positions at Little Harbor, and our school is in need. Our school's been in need for a really long time. When my children were young and they redistricted back in the late '90s, early 2000s, I went to New Franklin, and at that point, I decided that my daughter going into 5th grade would stay at Don Darrow because New Franklin then was old and worn and didn't look like the place I wanted for my daughter, and nothing's been done. They've been promised improvements year after year, and they keep getting overlooked, and something needs to change. The kids deserve more. We have great kids. We have kids who are working really hard, but we don't have the facility to keep this going. The kids deserve better, and I hope that the city can make that happen for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nancy Nautilus Claybird, 405 FW Hartford Drive. Before I start my speech, I just thought I'd tell a little story. You all know I have a 36-year-old son with Down Syndrome, and when he was at Don Darrow in the 3rd or 4th grade, I was a volunteer at the school, and I went to do some work, and I needed to use the mimeograph machine. How many people out here know what a mimeograph machine is? I'm dating myself a little bit. Anyway, I opened the door where they kept the mimeograph machine, and there was my son in this tiny, unheated, well, it must have had some heat, but no windows, having speech therapy. So I guess what I'm trying to say is years ago, that was the situation we had at Don Darrow, and with the cooperation of the city council and the CIP, we made the improvements to Don Darrow so that my son didn't have to have his speech therapy in the mimeograph room anymore. So anyway, that being said, I'm here to ask for your support for the CIP funding for New Franklin School. Many of you know that New Franklin is a fabulous gem in our school fleet. It is the smallest of our elementary schools, and it has enjoyed for the past several years a high ranking in many New Hampshire school surveys, and it has been declared a Blue Ribbon School. Many building improvements are desperately needed at the school, such as the examples that people have given. We want to make our learning spaces up-to-date for all of our students, and New Franklin School is the next project that needs to be done. I want to shout out to the support we get from all of the parents in all of our schools, and those at New Franklin have truly stepped up to... and those at New Franklin have truly stepped up to be involved in what they can do to make New Franklin the best it can be under the present condition. Please support the CIP funds for New Franklin School. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colleen Spear, and I'm here from the Portsmouth Sustainability Committee, specifically to express support for four CIP proposals: the electrification of the city fleet, a city solar inventory, microtransit study, and greenhouse gas accounting. Microtransit will be covered in more detail by Bill Lyons, and city fleet electrification will be covered by Fred Calsonari, but all of these projects are in support of the Portsmouth Climate Action Plan. Specifically to the proposal to inventory city sites for solar arrays, this is essential for the eventual success of the city's climate action plan, and I do want to express support for the eventual inclusion of non-b buildings like city land and parking lots, to have a more holistic understanding of the city's inventory of capacity and feasibility of solar for city properties. Moving on to the greenhouse gas audit, the last time we had a full accounting of our greenhouse gas emissions as a city was in 2021. Best practice is between, somewhere between two to four years, and having a higher quality, more regular greenhouse gas accounting enables us to get better and more grants for eventually improving our greenhouse gas emissions. Previously, we had been doing this largely through volunteer efforts and internship efforts, but our hope is by having a full professional accounting, we will get more accurate numbers to reflect the work that is being done on the city level. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Bill Lyons, sixty-two Mendham Avenue, Portsmouth, member, as Colleen said, of the Sustainability Committee. My comments are in support of Project B one, twenty-six, twenty-nine, for a microtransit shuttle loop feasibility study. The Sustainability Committee proposed this project last year and this year to implement Action DTS four of the Climate Action Plan, or CAP. The project reflects citizen input from Portsmouth Climate Action and two community climate conversations at the library on sustainable transportation. Transportation is the dominant source of our greenhouse gas emissions, it's sixty percent, and that's the type of data that comes out of the greenhouse gas inventory that Colleen was describing. So then, we know the sources, so then we can prioritize the actions to respond. It's critical to support affordable and attractive options to reduce single-driver vehicle trips to meet the CAP goals of carbon neutrality. As a dense and walkable city with growing traffic and parking strains, there are important opportunities to increase from today's very stark one percent of trips by public transit in Portsmouth. We can do better, and there are many reasons to do better. Microtransit is an innovative approach to public transit with flexible schedules and routes on demand. A shuttle loop could be a practical and limited step to quickly provide direct and more frequent service and attract new bus riders. For example, a shuttle every thirty minutes along Lafayette Road, Route One to Middle Street, downtown, out Islington to CNJ, past the hospital, then looping back could create a transit corridor between neighborhoods, connecting neighborhoods, the high school, downtown jobs, hotels and restaurants, the West End, the hospital, Portsmouth Housing Properties, and CNJ. When you think about why people are not necessarily crowding the CNJ bus, I think the two major reasons are frequency and transfers. To make similar sorts of trips, as in this example, you would need to come downtown and transfer to another bus. Very hard to attract anybody that has a car as an option that can make that trip much more quickly. There are five additional near-term benefits from a shuttle in addition to reducing the greenhouse gas emissions as called for in the CAP, and advanced top Portsmouth priorities that you as a council are addressing every day and every month. One, residents of affordable and other housing would have lower-cost access to jobs and other destinations. When transportation is added to housing, many households are spending over fifty percent of their income on combined housing and transportation, making Portsmouth not only singularly unaffordable but doubly unaffordable. Developers could offer access to the shuttle loop as an amenity for residents and reduce the need for parking. And as a transportation planner, I can say that a dollar spent on a bus can be the best investment in affordable housing. Two, improved access to workers for employers, and we know that that's a constant problem. Three, reduced traffic and parking demand, delaying the need to construct a third downtown garage. Four, residents unable or preferring not to drive could come downtown, and we've had discussions about the need to bring residents downtown. This is a way to do it without adding or consuming available parking or building new parking, and it would complement other parking discounts. Five, visitors could arrive from Logan and Boston on CNJ at Peas and connect conveniently to hotels, restaurants, and shops for a car-free tourist visit. This is how tourists visit best-practice peers like Savannah, Charleston, Burlington, where in Savannah, where the city, the bus agency, and the hotels operate and fund a free shuttle for residents and visitors. There are opportunities to move ahead simply and quickly while exploring the limited availability of state and federal funds. The Sustainability Committee members are ready to work with staff to identify best practices and explore options with interested committees, the Rockingham Planning Commission, COSS, and stakeholders. Research could consider financial support from employers, developers, and the hospitality industry. There could be a compelling use of parking revenue to bring residents downtown by public transit while reducing parking demand, so one use of the parking revenue is not just to build more parking, but to reduce the need for parking. Initial research could consider a shuttle pilot with evaluation and provide input for an RFP to evaluate future innovations, including microtransit. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I am Fred Calsonari, twelve forty-six South Street. I'm also a member of the Sustainable Committee, and I'm speaking on behalf of the capital item for the electrification of the city fleet. Not only will it help the city achieve its goal of carbon neutrality by 2050, but it, given that what Bill said about transportation being such a big component of our carbon emissions, attacking transportation is a key way to do that. But in addition to achieving the climate goals, having electric vehicles on our streets makes the city a more pleasant place to be. It's quieter, there's less fumes from tailpipes. It's better for our children. And just think about comparison of a UPS truck in your neighborhood versus an Amazon electric truck in your neighborhood. The Amazon truck is much quieter, less disruptive to your daily life, so that's just some of the reasons why I advocate for taking up this capital item. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of City Council. Karen Rosania, thirty-two Boss Ave. I'm a member of the Portsmouth Arts and Cultural Commission, and tonight, I am representing the commission to voice our strong support for the city to fund a CIP Artist-Live-Work feasibility study for sixty-five thousand. I'm also here as an advocate for the Portsmouth community, and we might ask the question, why do we even need an Artist-Live-Work feasibility study in the first place? And it's because the public has been asking for more affordable places where artists can both live and work for over twenty years now. It's documented in both cultural plans. What many people may not understand is artists typically pay studio rent on top of their mortgage or their apartment rent. This is why many artists have been priced out of Portsmouth, but we need them here. They are the backbone to the creative economy for the city. Artists, and when I say this, I'm talking about all types of artists, performing artists, visual artists, musical artists, are the reason people are spending over seventy million dollars a year while visiting Portsmouth, as we've heard from previous presenters. So without the artists, the venues could become empty brick-and-mortar buildings. A feasibility study will help determine a project concept, possible locations for affordable Artist-Live-Work space, funding and financing sources, successful leadership models, and how best to align with broader community goals. So I believe the question came up at the City Council Joint Work Session Meeting with Planning Board last week, and I know this was also raised, why not just have city staff look into all of this? I can say firsthand, this is not an easy lift. It took myself and several other members of the commission two years to pull together the Artist-Live-Work report that was presented and approved by City Council. Given we've been trying to get some traction under Artist-Live-Work space for over twenty years, we feel it's time to bring in the experts. We are recommending the use of ArtSpace out of Minneapolis. This is a nationally renowned nonprofit organization. This is what they do. They work with communities all over the United States to find possible locations, determine funding sources, come up with a project plan, provide guidance on successful leadership models, and ensure alignment with community goals. Even developers look to ArtSpace for consultation, and this is how we were connected to ArtSpace. So ArtSpace has provided us a potential scope of work. They are saying it will take them eight to twelve months to do a full feasibility study, and it would be done in two phases, which is included, by the way, in the sixty-five K. This all presents an opportunity to be a leader in affordable housing tailored to Artist-Live-Work space. For all these reasons, we are asking you as a commission to support your securing the sixty-five thousand for an Artist-Live-Work feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, my name is Emily Robichelle. I live at seventy-seven Holly Lane. This is my daughter Ruby. She's in sixth grade at Portsmouth Middle School, and Peter, who is in fourth grade at New Franklin. Also, thank you for all your service. I don't know how you do this. It's way past my bedtime. I'm here tonight to encourage the planning board and the city council to maintain and vote in the funding for much-needed renovations at New Franklin. I was glad to hear Mayor McEckren say at the last meeting and then again tonight that the council plans to tour New Franklin and all of these facilities very soon. I think it'll be an eye-opening experience for those who haven't been in the building before, and I encourage you to do comparative visits at Little Harbor and Don Darrow so that you can see the inequities that exist, both with regard to indoor spaces for learning and, as Nellie Clark earlier mentioned, the exterior grounds. These are inequities that simply should not exist, and beyond just voting to keep the CIP funding, I hope you will also consider exploring why they have been allowed to exist for so long. I mentioned at a meeting in October that the NFS community has been promised renovations since I first bought my home in an NFS zone neighborhood. This child right here was an infant then. She has now finished elementary school. I would also say, speaking to her, sports and enrichment activities are sometimes those key elements that keep kids engaged in learning every day and keep kids wanting to come to school. I would say that my daughter's love for basketball was one of those pieces, and the dilapidated, cracked tile court at New Franklin was her nemesis her entire time there. And as someone else mentioned, we don't even have space to watch our kids play sports, which is really unfortunate. We have to travel to Little Harbor to do that. I also work at Portsmouth Middle School. Quite a bit of disparity in those facilities. We have an amazing school, and I'm very grateful for it. I know there are questions at last week's meeting. I believe Counselor Moro just mentioned the redistricting and whether any of that has alleviated any of the funding needs that were brought up in the prior CIPs. I know you will see on your tour that these are two very separate issues and that redistricting simply and finally cast a spotlight on that disparity. I appreciate how clearly Superintendent McGlothlin explained the deficit of needed spaces, like student services and intervention rooms, as well as spaces for staff collaboration. The building is also dated and in great need of renovation. New Franklin is a wonderful community that I'm so grateful my children have been a part of, but our students do notice and internalize this disparity. As a teacher at the middle school, I hear them talk about it regularly, and that just shouldn't be happening in this town. They compare their experiences to their peers. So please keep the funding for Phase One of the expanded renovation plan with a vision to funding Years Two and Three as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, Ruby, and Peter.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Simons. I'm not a resident of Portsmouth. However, my husband would tell you that I'm a resident of One Franklin Drive, New Franklin School, where I'm the principal and have been for ten years. I've been a school administrator here in Portsmouth for twenty. I am here to follow up on some of the wonderful voices of some of my parents, staff members, but to really, I want to come back and reiterate and support the words that they have shared with you, but I also want to share that I'm speaking for my sixty-five-plus-member staff, many of them Portsmouth residents, my custodians, paraeducators, kitchen staff, teaching staff, office staff, who have really just done an admirable job in a charming space, is what we call it, but it is a space that exemplifies great inequity. I'm also acting as the voice of a third of the parents of New Franklin, or I should say, I'm going to correct myself, twenty-five percent of the parents of New Franklin who don't attend city council meetings ever. They're my families that reside in neighborhoods of a lower socioeconomic status that might not feel as comfortable coming and sharing with you, that they are just as concerned about the spaces their children are receiving services in. But they love New Franklin. We all love New Franklin, but what we are noticing, and I have to really champion my, we call them the powderhouse moms, who, when they were involved with the redistricting conversations and touring those buildings, really started to push this conversation forward, and they're doing it even though they have children in middle school or fifth grade, because they know that this commitment of these CIP funds, although a large price tag, is something that is going to last for decades to come and impact hundreds of children. So I would just ask for you to strongly consider supporting both the planning board and the city council, these CIP funds towards New Franklin, that has been long waiting. The improvement of space, but also improvement for security. A big part of these funds are going to go towards making a secure entryway into our building to keep our kids and staff safe. That hasn't been brought up very often, as I've been listening in on the conversations, but that is such an important part. So I want to thank you for the time and the consideration, and I really appreciate you supporting the hundreds of children that will be impacted by this agreement to support the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Simons.
Hi, my name is John Paul McNeil, and I live at sixty-seven Crescent Way. I have one second grader who attends New Franklin and one soon-to-be kindergartner, and I mostly want to echo what others have said tonight, especially my older son's friend, Wyatt, who spoke earlier about the children that he sees sitting in the hallways who need that extra attention, and I feel like we owe them the decency, we need to show them, have them, give them some privacy when they just need a little bit of extra help. Right now, they don't have a separate space to go and do that. The second thing that Wyatt talked about was the library is basically a hallway, and it needs to be a, although media centers, you know, libraries are very different from when I was a kid, when I was shushed a lot, but having that constant distraction is not appropriate for a great learning environment. The last thing I want to emphasize is something that I experienced myself. One day, my son left his water bottle at home, and when I was, again, when I was a kid, I didn't have a water bottle, but they can't go anywhere without them today, and I get it, I get it. It's important. So I, of course, took my water bottle to New Franklin to give it to him, and I rang the doorbell and was waiting for a staff member to come in and open the door for me. While I was waiting for the staff member, one of my child's friends walked by and tried to let me in, and I had to wave her off, because I knew that wasn't the right thing to do, but she very easily could have just let me in, and I would have walked right into the school. So... So I wanted to, the last piece, I'm glad Principal Simons brought it up about, about the safety because that is important as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, I'm Lisa Rappaport. I'm at 26 Brewster Street. I am a member of the school board, and I'm also a parent of kids in our schools. I am going to try to err on the side of brevity at this point in the hearing and say, I really want to echo many of the things that have already been said. And I just want to emphasize, as a parent of a kid who has received special education services at Little Harbor when they were young and had gorgeous spaces where they truly had a spot where they could decompress, where they could do OT and PT, it makes a huge difference in kids' mental health and the success of all the services we're trying to provide them when they have a space that is welcoming. And I think that as a community, we value equity. We value creating equal opportunities for all of our kids. And I just think that this is fundamentally the right thing to do, so I appreciate your consideration. And that's all I will say because you've heard a lot already. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'm going to keep it brief, too. Thank you for including this in the CIP. You've heard from school members, parents, staff, some very brave, a very brave student.
Oh, sorry, just name.
Julie Gallat. And some more very brave students are stepping up. But I do just want, for one last time, because I know all the faces, but I would just like to see everyone out here who's here as a parent, staff, or family member from New Franklin or a student to just kind of raise your hand so that way the council members can see how many people are here who might not be coming up to speak. So, thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
My name is Annie Clark. I live at 152 Essex Ave. I'm a fourth grader at NFS. I have a brother at the middle school and a little sister who is a NFS second grader. I think NFS needs a renovation. We need a better gymnasium, a quiet library, and a real soccer field for my fifth-grade soccer. Thank you.
Great job, Annie.
Good evening. My name is Margot Doring, Jones Avenue. I'm here to talk a little bit about the microtransit study. I'd like to say that I'm for having a study, but I would like to be sure that it is not simply a microtransit study. Any type of transit system is going to be part of the overall ecosystem that makes up transportation around the Portsmouth area. That includes sidewalks, bike lanes, cars, parking, coast transportation, Portsmouth senior transportation, and potentially this microtransit study. If you're going to focus on just one item, you're going to lose the overall picture. Bill Lyons spoke about a shuttle system, and he named where he thought the route might go. Coast already covers those exact streets and routes that Bill is talking about. What he's hoping to accomplish with microtransit is to increase the frequency so that people don't have to wait as long or they don't have to transfer as much. I would like us to have a study that takes a look at the existing system and sees what can we do with the existing system, with the infrastructure and the investment we already have? And let's turn it into something that delivers the type of service that the City Council is looking for. What are you looking for? I'm not sure I understand. And I would love to have you hire someone like Jarrett Walker Associates, who would take a look at the overall system and ask these questions. What are you trying to accomplish? And how can we build you an integrated system that will accomplish these things? As opposed to simply trying to solve one identified problem without taking a look at the what's happening overall? You could spend a lot of money building a microtransit system that already exists. It's called a taxi cab. On demand, whenever you want to go, wherever you want to go. When I first arrived in Portsmouth, you could stand in downtown Portsmouth, and there would be a taxi at a taxi stand, and you could go somewhere. When you came up from Logan, you could get on CNJ. You could tell the bus driver you needed a cab, and there would be a cab waiting for you because they would call into the dispatch office at CNJ, and they would call the taxi company. And the taxi would send over three or four cabs that would take you wherever you wanted to go. So in the advent of Uber and these other companies that don't have to guarantee how many cars are going to be out there, the taxi system has been horribly degraded. And, you know, that's the market. These things happen. And that's the other reason I'd like this study to really be inclusive and not just focus on microtransit as possibly being some kind of silver bullet. Because I think you're going to spend a lot of money to find out that it's not. So let's take a look at the whole system. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Good evening. David Colkins, 175 Woodlawn Circle, here tonight on behalf of Bryn and Josie Colkins, first and fifth grade at New Franklin High School, or New Franklin School. Quickly, just want to echo everything that's been said in support of the CIP for New Franklin. And also, as a builder, developer in the city who helps people invest in their homes here, I would urge the council to do the same and invest in New Franklin School, which supports so many wonderful families. And last, with all of the talk on the alternative energy sort of initiatives, maybe this would be a wonderful opportunity to put solar on New Franklin and have the Oversight Committee a part of all of that. So thank you again, and hope that you see it fit to keep moving the New Franklin CIP along. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jones. I live at 103 Woodlawn Circle. And I have two children right over here who were graduates of New Franklin School. And I work in the school library, or hallway, as we like to call it. And I just want to say that I support what everyone has said here, and I just encourage everyone to think about the three phases of the project at New Franklin School, and not just the first phase, which is focused on security, but really improving the whole school because I think you can go into the school and you can feel that it has a hard, and it just needs an update in its body, I think. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Since I happen to be here, I want to give a little context. Russ Grazer, Kier Sarge Way. ArtSpace has been to Portsmouth in the past, this consulting firm that's mentioned in the CIP. They came around 2008 as a guest of ArtSpeak, the prior cultural commission. And we're here for two days and took a look through the community at what could potentially be possible for Art's Live Workspace. Portsmouth wasn't quite ready yet at that time to do a full study, but I think the community is ready for this now. You're not going to find a better consulting team to do this type of work. You're not going to find a better price tag for a consulting team to do this type of work. And I think as an employer of 50 artists in this community at Portsmouth Music and Arts Center, this is very much needed. We hire people that have to drive 30 to 50 to 60 minutes to come in and teach in this community and then go home. And having grown up here in this community and seen what happens in this community as a result of the arts thriving economically, culturally, within our community, having something like this is a very smart decision, very forward-thinking, and could really make an impact on the sustainability of our arts and culture scene and the vibrancy of our economic, you know, our cultural economy. So please seriously consider this. I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Good evening. Tony Coviallo, 341 Denon Street. I am the vice chair of the Planning Board. And prior to my time on the Planning Board, I was on a parking committee with Chairman Chelman, who's here tonight, and I hope will speak. We're part of the Parking Study Committee, looking at needs analysis and coming up with some principles for the, for the city to abide by when it comes to parking standards. We had a consultant, I'm sure all of you know this, this is partly for the public. At the time, which was about a year ago, the consultant said we were going to need 500 to 600 new spaces in a garage in the next five to six years. And I know we have funding in the capital improvement plan to begin that process. I just urge that process to move forward. I don't know if the initial planning dollars, which I think is $150,000, is enough to get that study started. It's going to take a number of years. We're going to have to have a very public process of choosing a site, and then the long period, probably two years plus, of actual construction. So I urge you to get that going. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. It seems like you've convinced Chairman Chelman to speak.
Rick Chelman, 224 State Street. Yes, I will echo the comment about the parking garage. We're looking at probably a ballpark $30 million project we're going to need to be doing in the next five, six years. I think that it's a little bit disingenuous to only put $150,000 in the capital improvements plan, which, as we know, isn't actually budgeting anything yet. I think we need a bigger number. And I think we'll bring this up Thursday evening at the Planning Board. Maybe we'll come back to you with a recommendation for a specific number as opposed to tonight. But for the public to understand this, parking, as in the parking study that was done, and the work that I do as a private person as well, it's public infrastructure. And the best parking in a municipality like Portsmouth is city-owned parking. It generates a lot of revenue, as you know, and it also prevents the spread of privately-owned parking lots that don't get used as much as public parking gets used and doesn't, and the public parking doesn't generate the revenue for the city that the city parking does. So it is needed. It's actually needed sooner, I think, than five or six years. The last data I saw also showed that most of the users of the parking are not residents. They come from out of town, and that's what supports a lot of the downtown businesses. So it's more than resident convenience. It's really a downtown, it's downtown infrastructure. It's like, you know, the electricity that needs to be upgraded. It's like the sewer and water that need to be and are being upgraded in Market Square. So it is, it's something that's needed, and it's needed to be planned for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other speakers? Seeing none, none on Zoom. I would, we will, I'd wait a motion to extend the public hearing till December 8th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so if you would like to speak at December 8th, you can. I will entertain any questions of the council, but to reiterate what Nathan has said, and a good reminder for some of you folks that I do know, if you are new to this CIP process, out years are budgeted, or monies that are not yet committed. The, this year is what we commit, and we can't compel future councils in future years to spend any money. What we control is this upcoming year. And so New Franklin is in that for the upcoming year. It is still important to come out because discussions, as they occur, questions can have. I will say that having as many people come out and being involved as you have been certainly made an impression on many in the council. And this is started from a citizen request that began as a part of the touring of the facilities during the redistricting conversations. So it's still important to come out. I'd ask that you send, if you're at home and you can't come, as many cannot, we recognize you can also speak on Zoom, a well-crafted email, and it's sent. And I've seen a couple of those come through in the last couple of days is also important. Not just for New Franklin parents, but for anything that you see within the CIP. Our goal is to make sure that we are aligning the resources that we have in the city versus the needs and wants of the city of Portsmouth. So appreciate everyone coming out. And with that, Counselor Denon.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the December 8th City Council meeting, I plan to have a motion as agenda item under my name to add general funding for potentially a contractor to professionally complete our greenhouse gas emission surveys, not just help us achieve our net-zero emissions goal, but also help us obtain additional funding for other related projects.
Counselor Denon. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to suspend the rules and bring up item 15B under mine and Counselor Moreau's name.
Second.
There was a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion under the second? Counselor, was there a second?
There was.
Yeah.
Okay, is, any discussion?
We just didn't.
Your Honor.
What's that?
If there were any comments on New Franklin School, I thought maybe we could make them before moving on to other topics. I guess it's a bit late for that now.
Yeah, I mean, those kids got out of bed for a little bit. But we'll certainly, this will be a part of the record, any comments that are made. Any discussion on the modify? Or we're voting to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any discussion? Counselor Moreau?
I'd like to make a motion to move to modify CIP request, BI 26 PL 29, Micro Transit Study, page 88 of the November 12th CIP document, to change the funding source from federal grants to capital outlay and/or revenues for fiscal years '27 and '28.
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cook?
Your Honor, Counselor Moreau and I placed this item on the agenda because essentially, asking for federal funding or state grant funding at this stage for the next two years for fiscal years 2027 and 2028 is just delaying the project by two years. Because we all know that federal funding is actually being eliminated for a lot of transportation across the country, and that state funding was actually decreased just this year for coast service, as well as the federal funding. So that's existing transit that's losing funding. New transit options will not be receiving federal grants, federal and state grants, and it's really just wishful thinking to think that that prospect is a possibility. So I don't think that I can address this issue any better than Bill Lyons did, who has significant expertise in the area. I think that we need to move the funding source to either capital outlay or revenues or a combination of the two for next year, for fiscal year '27 and for fiscal year '28, so that this project can actually move forward. this project can actually move forward. It is, we all know that when we put things in the CIP budget, that doesn't mean the funding is spent immediately. The, the city manager chooses to bond that funding or use that funding when it's necessary to do so. This does not prevent the Sustainability Committee and the experts on that committee from pursuing this with city staff in saying how much we can do without actually spending this additional funding, but it allows the funding to be there should we need to, to hire a consultant to assist them in doing so.
Counselor Blaylock, then Counselor Bagley.
I just want to make sure if there was federal funding or state funding available, that this doesn't eliminate that we could use that if there was available.
I believe so, but Counselor Cook?
In the past, whenever we've had the opportunity to find state and federal grants, we have applied for those, and that has decreased our, the city's obligation in other areas as well. So I don't see that this precluding that. I just see it as funding the project if we do not receive any state or federal funds.
Right. And just to add to that, I think this is a great idea. Obviously, I'd love to see, you know, an actual microtransit that worked in Portsmouth. The fact is, though, that we all have to use it. You know, I know most of my neighbors would love the fact of the idea, but they're still going to get up and get in their car. You know, I worry about, I just worry about the cost of studies. You know, I worry about the study's going to come back and tell us it's going to be really expensive, and most people in Portsmouth don't want to use public transportation. I hope that's not the case, you know, and, but I'll support this in hopes that we can actually find a solution that works. Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I echo, you know, the importance of this. I just fail to see, we had VIA come in to Parking, Traffic and Safety and the EDC in twenty-twenty-four. They issued a twenty-seven-page study on microtransit. The truth is, over the next council term, our parking-funded subsidy to Coast will probably exceed a million dollars. That's just the trend that it's on. VIA said that to do microtransit would be an additional roughly one point five million dollars. I don't think we need a study because we have a very good study already. What we need to do is decide if we want to spend an additional one point five million dollars to support microtransit or not. We have enough information collected already. If the council's not prepared to spend that type of expenditure in addition to the coast levy, then I think this, this study is premature.
I'll pass the gavel. I have a comment on this. So the same reason that the, and I understand the desire to remove federal funding or to move off of federal funding is the same reason I can't support that at the moment, given that the, the state funding thus far for coast has been non-existent and has been held together by kind of duct tape and gum for, for quite a while. I worry that we're going to be in a position where we're going to have to, and this is a different kind of situation than we've been previously in because we're looking to the capital improvement plan faster. We're going to be in a position where we're going to be having a lot of people asking, you know, why are we spending as much money on coast and where the returns are? I, I am concerned about a position that we could be in where we're talking about money that could have been, you know, spent on coast is going to be talking about a study that in the last go-around with, with VIA, and I remember that, and I remember kind of the predecessors to that, that it was kind of not competing interests, but not aligned in that we didn't have a unified view of this. You know, if we had had, you know, Rad here speak on behalf of, you know, this would be a really important part of connecting that last mile, I would be more in favor of, of pulling these funds in from the general fund, but I know that the general fund is also going to be supporting coast. So at the moment, it's very difficult, given the fact that the folks that coast are supporting are some of our most vulnerable in the community, to say that we're going to study something when that money could have been going towards supporting coast, knowing that there's going to be a lot of pressure on state funds because there's going to be a lot of pressure on federal funds. At this point, I don't think that we're at a position to be able to fund this outside of that. If the state finances are different, then could certainly revisit this in the future, even in this year, but right now, we're not going to be, we're not going to know that until we start putting together our budget for, for the city of Portsmouth, whether or not we're, how much we're going to be asked to deliver for, for coast, and it, it was right up at the million-dollar mark. It will be past that this year, and I think that our efforts have to align on making sure, you know, we could, we could talk, you know, we know during COVID how quickly or how much adoption came from just doubling the routes, but doubling the routes in terms of timings from one hour to half hour costs a lot of money, and right now, we haven't even really broached that subject of the city of Portsmouth if we want to spend the money to double the routes and the frequency of those within Portsmouth. So right now, as much as I love the idea and being able to extend that microtransit to that last mile, I worry that it's going to be taking out money from, that we do not have to spend on coast, and so I can't support it.
Your Honor.
Counselor Tabor?
I would support it, and I go back to what Margot Dering said. We need a holistic look here. Now, this motion, I think, expresses the feeling we all have of we need to make some progress on transportation, and it needs to look at the coast system, use cases that involve, as Bill Lyons says, car-free tourism and maybe support by the private sector and the hotels. We don't know the answers to all of those, but I think it deserves a look, and the cost is relatively small, and if we move ahead with this motion, we can carefully think about a request for proposal and move ahead. If we don't go forward with this motion, we won't have any guaranteed money to put an RFP together and take a holistic look. So that's why I would support it.
Counselor Tabor? I had, Assistant Mayor, did you have a hand up?
Yes, Your Honor. I would agree with you that my concern is the conflicting between a city-run microtransit and what we are seeing with, with coast. I think right now, as you said, our most vulnerable people and the people who are maybe not even socially, economically vulnerable, but choose to take coast, I worry that we will be draining from that system. And so, while I understand, and as Counselor said, the sentiment of guaranteeing the funds for the study, I think much more could be done in our relationship with coast, and figuring out within their system if there's an ability through extra funding that may be less than what we would be spending on an independent service to increase microtransit or some types of additional shuttles within our city centers or within some of those more high-traveled points. But I really, again, Your Honor, agree with you that my real big concern is that we are going and we are seeing a tightening on the purse strings for public transportation. We're seeing on the federal level eliminations of funding extensively throughout the country, and we can expect, expect that trickle down for us. And so I really, really would, would push us to grow our relationship with coast, and they do what we're trying to do. So I think that we could look to them, and again, if we are going to spend the money and we don't know how much a, a microtransit system would cost us, but we, they do have the infrastructure and the knowledge, especially predating COVID and predating a few years ago, when there was a much more robust system. And so we do have some data points, or we could ask them for some access to data points, looking at rider usage, looking at pinch points, looking at cost analysis. So I would urge this council to, to step forward, growing that relationship. As we talk about always, we are not in the business of developing. We're not in the business of certain things, and so I'm not sure that we need to be in the business of operating a shuttle service when we have a company who has excelled in it in this community. So for those reasons, I would not support this motion.
Assistant Mayor, Counselor Cook, and then Counselor Moreau.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Assistant Mayor that we need to improve our relationship with coast and need to discuss more with coast about expanding their services. That said, coast is not expanding their services, they're cutting their services, and they've cut their services to some of our most vulnerable populations just this year because of lack of federal and state funding, which is exactly the problem that we're experiencing with this study and the way that we have it funded currently in the CIP. We're essentially saying, yes, we're interested in having this study, but we're not going to give it any funding. And that's essentially what it looks like until twenty-twenty-nine. We do need to improve our relationship with coast. We need to work with them to figure out ways to better support them and support their services. Nothing in moving funding from federal and state resources to revenues or capital outlay can, changes that work. We will still be needing to do that work. But we also, in doing a microtransit study, we're addressing a different population that coast doesn't necessarily address. The city of Portsmouth used to have a shuttle service and used to have external parking lots where downtown workers could park, and I see this as an opportunity to start considering different options for the city around parking, especially parking outside of the city center for downtown workers, which would reduce costs, not just for downtown workers, but also could reduce the city's costs. And the drivers of that cost around building a new parking garage, which we all know is in the foreseeable future, but it also would help us to better understand how we as a city can navigate this complex web of transit that we need to, we need to address, because there are no taxi cabs anymore in the city of Portsmouth, and Uber's not reliable in the city of Portsmouth. Otherwise, we would all take an Uber to see and Jag. You can't get an Uber. And Coast Bus, if I want to go from one side of downtown, from Lafayette Road out to the hospital, I have to have two transfers. So it's not reliable, and in a service that only runs once an hour, it could take three hours to go from one side of the city to the other. I could walk faster. So that's a major problem for residents who are dependent on public transportation, and I don't see Coast Bus service expanding anytime in the near future unless the city wants to more than double its supplement to coast. So we have to start thinking about other alternatives as well. This is just one of those alternatives, and putting this funding in place does not mean we're necessarily spending it. We can look at all the alternatives first through the Sustainability Committee, and then we can spend the money only if it's necessary to do so. But we will actually have the funding there if we do need to spend the money.
Counselor Moreau, and then Counselor Bagley.
I see this more as a necessity for affordable housing. I see this as a way, because we have a, trying to put in a lot of housing, we're trying to put in a lot of affordable housing, and I'd like this to be able to be a way that we could build a stronger relationship with coast, and maybe it's how we help, whether it's helping them with private funding that we're able to facilitate from downtown businesses. How can we help them expand that? And I think we need to know all the bit of the information in order to be able to do it, but transportation is very uniquely tied to affordable housing, and I think we can't talk about one and not tie in the other. And I think supporting this and making sure it moves forward in some way will actually help us down the road for that. That's why I support it.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Listening to the comments up here, I kind of feel like maybe there's a bit of a disconnect. We spent two years with the Parking Utilization Group, which wasn't just about parking, it was about transportation throughout the city. There's a sixty-five-page plan with appendices online. We have the VIA presentation and plan that was both to the EDC and to the Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee. I'd like to see us hold off on spending the money, and one of the things coast does is call for services. So if you call the head, the day ahead, and you have a doctor's appointment, they essentially come over like an Uber and take you to your doctor's appointment at a very, either free or subsidized cost. The monies that we're proposing for the study could greatly augment that, and I think there's a great deal of data that's already been laid out in a really concise, clear way. So I'd, I'd like to see us refer this to the Sustainability Committee. They can look at it. They can look at the presentation. They can point out where the holes are with some of the experts they have on the committee, and then we can propose a study that fills in the holes, because I think a lot of this information we already have, and I'd hate to see us duplicate efforts if we don't need to.
Counselor Bagley? Maybe a question to Sustainability Committee. Was there any meetings on the, on the Parking Utilization Study where it was discussed?
Prior studies have been discussed. I do not recall if that one specifically was discussed.
Okay, maybe an opportunity there. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Counselor Bagley that I think that the Sustainability Committee should discuss those studies, but if they have those discussions and identify a need, and we don't put this funding in place, it's a year and a half before we have an opportunity to put more funding in place for them to consider it. So if they look at the studies and they decide that we need to move forward, and we're waiting on federal and state funds, it's going to be a, a year and a half at minimum before that funding can come into place, and that assumes that we make a change for fiscal year twenty-eight.
Just to level set, this is for, no funds will be available before July twenty-six for this, for this. So it'd be an additional, it would be an additional year if that was the case. When is the next meeting of the Sustainability Committee?
This Thursday.
This Thursday. Could it, could this be taken up on the sustainability's, you know, we have until the eighth to, to discuss this vote or to, you know, make this motion. Could the Sustainability discuss the Parking Utilization Study as a, an agenda item?
I will ask if staff could send out that study to the members.
I'm seeing, oh, Peter. Okay, so is it possible that we just move to table this till the eighth in terms of, to have a, or, that's right, that's correct, like to table it to, to the eighth in, in order to take it up after the Sustainability Committee has the ability to review the work of the Parking Utilization Study?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to table it to the eighth. I'd like to have more time to, more information.
Your Honor, could we also include the VIA study as well? I think they go hand-in-hand.
Yep, VIA, that's right. Okay. Peter, still shaking your head yes so you could get the VIA study? Awesome, thumbs up. All right.
Thank you, Peter.
So, well.
We need a second.
Yep, there needs to be a second. All right. All in favor to table until the eighth to further, and await the Sustainability Committee for the adoption of the CIP? All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Okay. Back to the other. Okay, so we're still just additional questions and deliberations. So anybody with any other questions? Counselor Bagley?
I have two, Your Honor. First, I just want to thank the, the parents and students that came out and spoke for New Franklin School. I think this is, this shows a lot of why the CIP is so important. It wasn't, unfortunately, on most of our radar that New Franklin School needed these improvements, so it wasn't in prior years of the CIP, but because we have a comprehensive seven-year planning document, we were able to move things around and prioritize, and I fully expect that the council's going to support the, the change to, to move New Franklin School, or not to move it, but to keep it where it is. And having so many people show up tonight and sending emails certainly bolsters that case. So I just want to make that comment since we're not voting on it tonight. The, the second question I have, and I see we have, we have our fire chiefs here, the fireboat, unfortunately, I, I know we have a lot of more calls on the river than, than we used to have. However, that is a, a pretty expensive item. If, if you could speak just to the, the needs and what needs you think it's addressing, not just to the council, but to the community as a whole.
That's Chief McCone.
Thank you, Counselor. The, the boat was a, as you may recall, the previous fireboat that served the city was given to us on a, a federal grant, and then that, that boat was disposed of when it became a little bit too expensive for us to maintain. The second boat that was bought that we're still currently using from twenty-seventeen is a, it's a smaller boat that we have since learned just isn't appropriate for the, the mission that we're using it for. We don't have the room to be able to, to treat people and keep them warm when we pull them from the water. So the, the goal here in the, in the CIP was to move the, the boat up, excuse me, was to recognize that we needed to move the boat from the, the platform that we're on to a more enclosed platform that would be year-round. And then secondly, also recognize that the, the Coast Guard was having some challenges, and we're talking about scaling back their operations in the, not just here in Portsmouth, but nationwide. And so that was the, the goal, was to, to bring it forward and discuss it. We have not been successful in, in obtaining any federal money to be able to go towards this project, but we're, we're still looking for those sources in the event that they become available or that we qualify and do receive an award.
Your Honor, Casco.
Sure. My understanding is the, the new boat would allow it to be moored year-round instead of, in the wintertime, we now store it on land and then trail it to the water.
Correct.
Could you speak to the difference in response time?
So if, if we have to get the boat out of storage and then trailer it and put it into the water, we're, we're looking at probably a forty-five-minute to an hour deployment time, which is obviously not ideal, especially in the winter months when we're talking about hypothermia. You know, in the, in, in the wintertime, what we are looking to do is to, to use our, utilize our partners elsewhere on the river, be it the Coast Guard or perhaps some of the state assets, or, you know, maybe some of the other local municipalities that may or may not be available. The other challenge that we have when we're operating the boat in the wintertime is our crews are also exposed and having to put them in exposure gear to be able to operate and safe, safely being exposed to the winter environment and the, and the cold water spray. So what, what we're hopeful to do is to find something that will be able to suit our mission and, and to be able to serve the city and its visitors in, in a better environment and to take care of the, the men and women that are out there working on it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Tabor?
Two questions, just to follow.
Oh, sorry. Chief McCone.
I just wanted to know how many, how many feet long is the boat you're looking at?
The current vessel we're looking at is about thirty-four feet.
Okay, so that's a substantial.
But yeah, not, not substantially larger, but larger enough that we could put a patient on a backboard in, inside.
And then I had a question for the school superintendent or, or Nathan. The, the Technical Institute at the high school last year was, the total cost was going to be ten million. In this element sheet, it's twenty million, and I just wanted to understand, is that all, have we changed the scope of the work?
We have not changed the scope of the work. I think we're trying to anticipate, some of it's just anticipating the inflationary costs that we're seeing from the time we originally put the project in place to when what we think might happen. And right now, I think we have, we have an FY thirty. But even at this point, FY thirty might be optimistic based on where we are in line to receive state funding. So the timing of that project would be dependent upon, would be dependent upon other schools who are in line before us. So I think a, a chunk of the change, the change in the, in the project, I think is primarily connected to inflationary, anticipated inflationary pressures from where we are, when we originally put the project in the book years, years ago.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have a question, I think, for the superintendent. I just, I want to follow up on the questions I asked at the work session last week around New Franklin School. I'm very concerned about this situation at New Franklin and making sure that we address it adequately. And I asked about numbers of students that we project will be there in five years. I just don't want to end up in a situation where we have to put temporary classrooms on-site in 10 years because we didn't anticipate the number, adequate number of students at that school. Like, I don't want to end up with mobile classrooms like at Don Darrow.
Sure.
So is there a way that the council can get the projected numbers that we're expecting as far as student numbers at New Franklin? I know that you probably did that as part of your redistricting planning.
We did. I think what's challenging for us, what is going to be challenging for us, and I think I was speaking to, what, when, let's say, for example, when Christmas Tree Shops comes online, it's going to be really, like, we're having, we have a difficult time projecting that. Now, what we, we talked a lot about during redistricting, we went back and spent time with planning, looked a lot at the types of new housing that have come on board in the last five years. And the example that we talked about a lot was, was down at the Yards.
The Yards?
The Kate Street Properties. And that in those properties, we ended up, this is like, two years ago, we had two students out of all those properties. And so what we're seeing is, it's very much, as projects come on, what we, well, we, I'll say the reverse of that was, when the housing came on in Beverly Hill, we had, had a cluster of students that came out of Beverly Hill. So standalone housing, we're seeing that we pick up, we pick up students. In one-to-two bedroom, you know, one-to-two bedroom, either condos or apartments, what we're seeing is generally, we do not. And we also know in conversations with folks on the planning side of things, and people connected with the projects, the most profitable projects where developers can hit their bottom line is one-to-two bedroom units. With, and so we, and we do get a little bit, we see a little bit more with three-bedroom units, but it's just a little. Even those properties, if families get, what we're seeing is if families get where they're going to spend that much money on, say, like, one of the properties at Yockins, they're more likely to go buy a house in Epping, and then to, then to have that type of thing. So, so I think for us, what's going to be really crucial is as those new, as new housing comes on, in the existing catchment area for New Franklin, what is the makeup of that housing? And right now, based on the short-term, the short-term history of the city, if it is those one-to-two bedroom units, we don't anticipate picking up much. But if it is going to be different styles of housing, and whether that's in New Franklin, or that's in other spots around the community, we'll have to adjust. But at the moment, based on the projects that we're seeing, we don't necessarily see the trend moving towards overwhelming, let's say, New Franklin. But when there's a project, the scope of Christmas Tree Shops, we're hesitant to project too, too far out as a result of that.
Just a quick follow-up. So are you confident that even if you see growth at New Franklin, that you have adequate space at, say, Little Harbor to take on that growth?
That's what I was going to say, is what would happen is if we, if those projects that come online in that catchment area, what it would force us to do, which no families who just went through redistricting want to, like, talk about, is overall, I think our system could absorb that through another round of redistricting, if we had to. Not where we want to be, because there was, we went through so much work already, and so much community engagement around what we already developed. But I think right, right now, we would be able to take, to take on some additional growth inside of our existing facilities with a revitalized New Franklin as part of that picture.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley?
Sorry, last one.
For Zach, or superintendent? Oh, just in general, sorry.
Oh, I thought I was getting the Peter Rice treatment first.
It is, in fact, for Peter Rice. The recycling and solid waste transfer station, for years, we've had this swap shop request. And my understanding was, part of the reason we couldn't do the swap shop is we had to wait until the recycling, solid waste upgrades were completed. But I see the swap shop in '28, and the upgrades in '31. Is it, am I kind of misunderstanding the timeline, or, I know we've recently done some upgrades in that area, so maybe those are the upgrades that we were waiting on?
Good evening, City Council. Peter Rice, Director of Public Works. The, the transfer station project is going to be pushed out for a while, given all the other capital demands that we have. The request for a swap shop is a relatively easy thing to accomplish with the installation of a small shed that'd be relatively cheap to build. So the thought was that we would at least make some forward motion in something that residents have been asking for for a while, acknowledging the fact that if we waited for the transfer station, it may be a number of years out further. It continues to get pushed out, given the other capital demands.
So I see it's in '28. Is that more or less to give you guys time to figure out where the shed would go, or is that just a budgetary decision, '28 versus '27?
It's, it's a combination of both. You know, as you probably know, we're currently finishing some projects at the DPW site, and we wanted to let those projects settle down in terms of, you know, when you, when you make changes like that, you're going to get a different traffic flow, you're going to get different operational things. And so we want to kind of organically get a feel for what that change in operations is going to be, so we don't decide to drop a shed in a spot that, well, geez, we wish we had put it 50 feet in the other direction. So it's, you know, part of it's just to let that process settle, and part of it is, is funding.
Thank you.
Counselor Moreau, for Peter?
Oh, yeah. I have a couple for you.
I was trying to keep my head down back there.
No, no, no. On the solid waste and recycling totes, are we actually, so what if people already have? So for instance, our trash can already conforms to the ones that you're getting. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, are we buying one for, like, every household in the city, and is it both for recycling and trash? So there's two? If you could just tell me a little bit more about the plan.
Eventually, it will be two. The, the goal is to transition over to the side-loading trash collection systems for a number of reasons. One, it's a safety concern relative to staff, and it's also a staffing concern. It takes three bodies, three people to operate the packers, as we have them configured now. If we, if we consolidate to a single, the side loader, it's a single operator, we're able to compensate that single person better, so that it's a better position, and we're able to keep staff for, you know, it's a lot of wear and tear, and staff get on those vehicles and they really want to rotate off. So it gives us a lot more flexibility when it comes to operations. Having, the, we've studied other organizations that have transitioned, and as part of that transition, they supply the trash, the totes, to make it consistent, make it easier to operate, and make it more accessible to the residents. Obviously, I have, I have two trash totes that are exactly what we would be doing, so I would not need two. However, they would have RFID identification into them, so that when, or if and when a trash can does disappear, or somebody, you know, if something migrates or whatever, you're able to track it. And the, the other thing to be aware of is, currently, we have a hard time managing downtown trash collection when there are so many people that are disposing it. If you have RFID associated with those trash totes, you're able to get a better feel for who's disposing of what, and you can better manage the volumes being disposed of.
You're going to be able to track trash.
That is the evolving ton, as we, as we like to say.
I have another question, if I'm allowed.
Can I just ask one follow-up on the trash? So would this preclude any other trash from being picked up that's not in a tote?
So the, the challenge with Portsmouth is that we have some areas that probably wouldn't allow for this. So we're likely going to have a blended system in the tight spaces downtown and South End. You might not have the ability to be able to put totes on the side of the road. So we're going to have to look at each area. But the desire is to have everything in the totes. It does a couple of things. One, it helps contain it on windy days. It keeps it dry when it's raining. So we would like to encourage folks to get it to the point where they're not in separate containers. It'll also, eventually, if we need to give us the ability to regulate how the, if you're not in a tote like that, it would not be, it would not be a viable way of...
So maybe, maybe asked a different way. So Aurelia turned five today, and over the weekend, we had a party, and we produced, I would say, a significant amount of more trash than fit in the tote because of the amount of presence that she got, which was against a lot of things that we wanted. There was just a lot of, there's a lot of stuff. Now, more stuff in her house, but there was a lot of trash. So much so that we had to put another bag of trash out beside the tote. In this scenario, would that extra bag be permissible or not permissible from a pickup standpoint?
So this is a work in progress. There are a lot of things, such as, you know, that situation, or where, you know, where would you put it on the side of the street? How would you get, you know, how do you educate people? So there's a number of things that we need to do to educate the public. You know, that, that's a good question. I, you know, would have to look and see what other communities do. I would imagine that either the person gets, the truck driver gets out and throws it into the vehicle manually, or they say, you know, we're not going to pick it up, and we'd have to send a second truck by to do an additional pickup. So, I mean, so that's, we're, you know, we're working out the details on this. The, ultimately, we hear, the complaints we get mostly from folks are, the time of day we pick, pick the trash up, people are very upset that we start early. Having the ability to do, not have staff getting out into the traffic, getting back, back and forth, gives us some more flexibility relative to the time of day we could do this type of activity. So, you know, we'd need to figure out, you know, this, I'm sure there's that, that's a great question, but there's also the size of the toter. Somebody that's older, is mobily challenged, may have a hard time with a larger tote. We, you know, so we need to be able to accommodate, perhaps with a smaller tote. Typically, they don't generate as much trash either. So those are the types of things we'll need to work out.
Yeah, and I am fully on board on this transition. I think it's going to make a lot of sense, especially as we continue to have staffing concerns with this, and it's tough to keep, along with safety, et cetera. So, you know, just understanding, I think, this would be the first step in really understanding what this is going to look like, and what this is going to be, the citizens are going to be asked to, but to do and compromise with. But ultimately, it's a great service that you provide that not a lot of surrounding communities are able to provide. And to continue to provide the service, we're going to have to look at making it as efficient as possible, as a way to save taxpayer money, but also safety and our reduction in total waste, you know, as a, as a community.
Sure.
Assistant Mayor?
Just to comment on that, I know that, you know, Rochester has a program similar where, like, every household gets one tote. And friends of mine that live there have talked about how it has enforced, because you can have unlimited recycling. And so it has forced people kind of into this mentality of, we can only put so much trash out, we need to make sure we're recycling and being better within that. So I do think that there's a lot of times where, I don't have any kids, but I have 13 nieces and nephews, and I know a lot of those parties, sometimes present boxes, I had four of my nieces this weekend, present boxes get put in the trash, and sometimes not in recycling. So I do think forward progress of protecting our DPW staff members that are working and really kind of being mindful of what we are sorting, what is actual trash versus recycling. And, you know, I think, I was at DPW this weekend, and the staff there is just really amazing at, at the recycling facility, about making sure that things are sorted correctly. So I think just as residents, we need to be slightly more mindful going forward, too, of what we are sorting and what we're putting in garbage versus recycling.
And for the record, I will point out that we, we broke down all the boxes. They were just in a large box next to the recycling, in a different tote, next to the recycling tote.
I cannot guarantee my husband did the same for the five below.
Counselor Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Building off that and looking further into the future, since you're already looking at getting new trucks and bins that could be traced, are you considering simple technology on the trucks to weigh the bins? That's where a lot of forward-thinking communities are going, where they're weighing the trash itself.
We are exploring all the options at this point. We have not purchased any vehicles. This is really helping enable that process. We need the monies to be able to get the totes to move forward. We need to really flesh out what the program's going to look like. And we anticipate doing a pilot, probably on one section of the city, you know, probably to, you know, probably the Elwin Park area, something like that, to be able to get, you know, work out some of the details on how, how this would be implemented. The, you know, weighing vehicles would then, I guess, weighing the trash would then potentially lead towards a charge per ton type of thing. I don't see us going in that direction at this point. You know, however, you know, that, that could be something over time. I mean, it really comes to the, you know, the option of pay to throw as well, in terms of buying bags. But that is not something that we believe would be acceptable to residents, residents at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. And first, I want to compliment DPW on the work you do as far as trash pickup and recycling pickup. Not all communities have free trash and recycling pickup. And in fact, it's not just Rochester. Exeter charges per bag for trash pickup, free recycling, but per bag. So I think that we're very fortunate for, to have the services we have for a lower tax rate than some of our neighbors. I want to emphasize the importance of, when you're looking at new fleet vehicles for trash pickup even, to consider electrification, which I know is something that the Sustainability Committee had raised. But if we're moving in this direction, I realize we don't have charging capabilities at DPW to address a fleet this size. But if we could at least look at alternatives, hybrid vehicles that can do the same work at a minimum, and maybe do some pricing out of what it would, the differential would be to do electrification and charging stations.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Counselor Moreau?
I have one more. Totally not about trash, though. The Greenland well treatment, on page 161, you have that as a total project cost of $8.5 million, and the need to have it done by 2029. But you've only put $1.5 million in there, so I'm wondering what surprises we have in the future.
So the $1.5 is to top off the, to make up the total of the $8.5. So we have, we had previous monies pieced together, yes.
Okay, so you already have the rest of it. I was a little nervous about how much more you were going to add that wasn't showing, so thank you.
No. And that is the, the cost estimate as it stands right now.
Okay.
At 2029, I can, I look to Al to confirm, is EPA-driven deadline?
Yeah. Yeah, because you have a lot more money in fiscal year '29 for the Portsmouth and Colin Wells.
Correct. Yeah, that's, and hopefully, that's going to be Air Force-supported. That's the plan on that one.
Great, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Peter. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we've already extended the public hearing until the 8th. If possible, to have any revisions to the CIP in, you know, for the packet, they can always be made at the time of a council meeting. But to have them in advance is very helpful to help the conversation. Appreciate Counselor Cook and Counselor Moreau for bringing that up. It allowed us the conversation, and also a better decision ultimately on the 8th around that. So thank you for that. With that, we are going to...
Take a bathroom break?
Take, yes? You didn't even let me say it. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. We have a number of public hearings at the, they're coming up. I'm going to see, there's a number of individuals in the audience. I'm just going to see who's here waiting for something, and we'll pull yours up before. So 10-minute recess. I'm just going to see who's here waiting for something and we'll pull yours up before. So 10-minute recess.
Welcome back. We, I will wait a motion to take up the presentations and communications first with thirteen D and then followed by thirteen C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have the presentation from the Schleyer Foundation and PMAC regarding the reuse of the South Meeting House.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilors. My name is Dave Schleyer with the Schleyer Foundation. I'm joined here this evening with Russ Grazer from PMAC, Tracy Kozak from Arco Architects, and Karen Oliver from Huffle, Phoenix, Gormley, and Roberts. We're here tonight to present our joint proposal for long-term preservation and community reuse of the South Meeting House.
Dave, I'll let, if you just let me know next slide, I can do it.
All right, next slide. Thank you. Our goal is straightforward. The city leases the South Meeting House to the Schleyer Foundation, and we take on full responsibility to restore and steward the building. PMAC becomes the long-term nonprofit user, activating the space for community arts and programming. The model shifts capital and operating costs off the city while strengthening public use of a historic community asset. Next slide, please. We envision a restored South Meeting House that protects its historic character while serving as an accessible education and art space. Our goal is to preserve the building's heritage, modernize its functionality, and create lasting community benefits. Next page. The foundation funds, so the project team dynamic is that the foundation funds and leads the project. Chimburg provides construction and historic rehabilitation expertise. Arco provides preservation-based architectural guidance, and PMAC serves as a mission-driven community anchor tenant. Next, next page, please. This is a model we've executed before with Arco Architects and Chimburg builders. At Cary Cottage, the foundation fully restored a historic building, partnered with a nonprofit operator called Good Work, and ensured long-term public use. We're proposing the same successful structure here. Next slide, please. The foundation will take the major building systems and envelope, full exterior restoration as needed, and structural and mechanical systems, elevator installation, code upgrades pertaining to PMAC's use. PMAC will complete their interior fit-up needed for classrooms, bathrooms, studios, galleries, and other uses. At the end of this work, the city will have a fully restored, co-compliant historic building. Next slide, please. Now I'll hand it over to Russ for PMAC to discuss their program vision.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Mayor and city councilors. This is a case of a project at the right time, in the right place, with the right partner. PMAC has been in the community for 23 years now. Our mission is to build community through the arts, and we do that by providing accessible arts education opportunities for all the community. And you can go right to the next slide. And this just shows some of the artwork that's being done currently at our Islington Street location. And this is the program that would be moving over to the South Meeting House. And you can go to the next slide. And our vision for this is to have a fully accessible, including an elevator for the first time in this historic building, accessible school and art center that provides education programs, and that is right-sized for the organization and for the community. And that's really key, because it's being designed with the understanding that there are only 20 parking spaces on site. It's being designed with the idea that there are only going to be three classrooms on site, and they'll work in cycled time slots. And it'll provide opportunities throughout the course of a whole year for as many as 500 community members to enroll in arts programs. It'll allow PMAC to grow the tuition assistance that we provide to the community to as much as $200,000 a year between the two locations. And it's driven by accessible arts programming. You know, it's not really driven by a building project. This is about making sure that our community has access to arts programs, and this is the right project to do it. The renderings that you see here, this is one of the classrooms, and earlier you saw the rendering of the lobby. These were done by Tangram 3DS based on the Arco Architects designs. And we really think that this is going to provide a long-term home for much-needed visual arts education. PMAC's been very successful in music, but we're very limited in our space to be able to do visual arts on Islington Street. We'll be keeping the Islington Street building, doing music over there, and moving our visual arts campus to the South Meeting House. So we're really excited to do this, and we really thank you for considering this project. Keep going to the next one.
Thank you, Russ. This project brings major benefits. At no tax pay or burden, all capital work is privately funded. The building becomes a vibrant community art resource. The South End gains a long-term anchor for cultural programming, and the city retains ownership of restored historic landmark. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'm going to step back and summarize the lease structure here. I think this is, this is one of the main action items for, for tonight. The proposed lease is straightforward. We're proposing a 30-year term with 10-year renewal options. PMAC is the approved nonprofit sub-tenant to the Schleyer Foundation, who would be the primary tenant. No, no rent is paid, but the foundation's investment offsets, offsets rent. All sublease revenue stays with the building for operations and maintenance. Renewals would continue to require nonprofit use and compliance with the lease terms. Next slide, please. Here are the essential terms and public benefits at a high level. The foundation funds and completes all major building and system improvements, and PMAC funds its interior fit-up. All work follows federal preservation standards with the Historic District Commission oversight. PMAC is the initial sub-tenant. Other nonprofits may be approved by the city. All sublease revenue is reinvested into the building, care, and operations. The foundation is responsible for all maintenance. Rest assured, we will make sure the clock is running on time. The city continues to ensure the property, and the foundation carries liability coverage. Lastly, the city retains ownership throughout the lease, and all improvements revert to the city. The result is a fully restored historic building, returning, return to long-term community use without a taxpayer cost. If approved, we will finalize the lease agreement, advance design development, continue coordination with the city departments, and begin construction in 2026. Our goal is to have PMAC occupy the building in late summer 2026. Next slide, please. In closing, this is a partnership grounded in preservation, community benefit, and long-term stewardship. The foundation is committed financially, PMAC is committed programmatically, and the city retains ownership of the fully restored community landmark and release the financial burden to maintain the property. Thank you for your time, and good evening.
Thank you both so much. Counselor Dunn.
Your Honor, I want to be recusing myself from this vote. Chimburg Properties is a partner, and I'm a resident of Chimburg.
Fair enough. Counselor Bagley.
Thanks, Your Honor. Thank you for the great presentation. This is kind of exciting for me. I had a small part to play in it. I'm not a very artistic person, and I don't know buildings. But we, as a city, had a building that had a lot of historic value. It's a beautiful building, but was going to be very expensive to maintain and repair, and then wasn't really going to have a good governmental purpose. So we had a problem on our hands, and I want to commend some of the residents of the South End who reached out to the council. Counselors Cook and I went to meet with them, and they were very committed to, to raising money, and they wanted to create a nonprofit to do more or less what you guys are going to do. And we were able to suggest, maybe you should work with an existing nonprofit like PMAC. I don't know who brought the Schiller Foundation on board, but that's the, with the work that you guys have done at Cary Cottage, and then Chimburg, one of our, our better builders here in town. I mean, it's just an all-star team, putting a building that is, is very significant to our community, to a great purpose that most of our residents are going to support, at essentially no cost to the taxpayer. So this is probably one of the best things to come before us, at least at my count on the council. And I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work that has gone into this over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counselor Boglak.
Yeah, I want to thank Dave. I want to thank Russ. This is an awesome project. I love this building. I got to drive a submarine around the building when I was a little kid. You know, my grandparents would bring me over there whenever I was tearing their house apart. But I think this is a win-win for everyone involved. We get to preserve the building. We get to get a fantastic use for nonprofit, and kids and artists alike will get to enjoy the building. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you both so much for your presentation tonight. While I'm not a direct butter of the building, I live not too far away, and the neighbors are extremely excited about this building and seeing it restored to its previous glory. It is really a stunning building, and it is very important to not just that neighborhood, but the entire community. And I wanted to commend Russ and PMAC for taking the initiative to meet with the Neighborhood Association and to make sure that those channels of communication are open. It's really important for any project, and we're starting out on the right foot. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank you again. An excellent presentation, and it's, it's always funny to, to thank the presentation because it comes at the end of all of the hard work. But like, just thank you for all of the hard work, the vision that went into this, the ability to keep this building and preserve it in a way, you know, if there's a, if there's room for a small replica submarine in there, I'm sure there's a lot of nostalgia as a part of that. Doesn't have to be the full thing, but maybe on somebody's desk. But really, this is, you know, it also serves a need in the city of Portsmouth to continue promotion of the arts. And so we're very grateful that these two things are coming together in such a great way. So with that, I think it would make sense to take up the item under the city manager's.
Eleven A eight.
Spend the rules and take up eleven A eight.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd just like to thank Deputy City Attorney Trevor McCourt for working with the team. All parties did a wonderful job bringing it forward. Thank you.
Indeed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great night.
Alls we did was suspend.
Yeah, we just spend the rules, so we got to take the vote now. Sorry. Anti-climatic, but can we take the weight of motion?
So.
No, it's under the city manager's name. No, sorry, under the action.
Authorize the city manager.
Number eight.
Number eight.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to accept and approve a lease of the South Meeting House and the Schleyer Foundation substantial form to the lease contained in the agenda packet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have a presentation on the water sewer rate model.
So thank you, Your Honor. Water Resource Director Al Pratt will present our efforts to conduct revised rate model study that will evaluate options for revising the current rate structure established just about 11 years ago. So I'm turning it over to Al.
Thank you. Al Pratt, Water Resource Director. So this presentation is to introduce the water and sewer rate study. It's a project that's currently underway. Rate studies have been conducted routinely for the water and sewer enterprise funds many times in the past 30 years. The last one was completed in 2013. They're done to make sure our rate structure and our revenues are appropriate, and they're providing ongoing operational and capital needs for our water and sewer utilities. So I want to start the first slide here, just to make it clear what the enterprise funds. They are established specifically for managing the finances associated with the water and sewer utilities. They are separate from the, and have nothing to do with the, the general fund. Property taxes do not go into the enterprise funds. Revenues for these funds are directly from water and sewer user fees and rates, essentially water bills, and other sources specifically related to the utilities. Next slide. Water and sewer revenues pay for the operational costs as well as the capital improvement projects. And we are the fourth-largest water supplier in the state, and we serve the seacoast region, including Newington, Greenland, Newcastle, and a portion of Rye. Our infrastructure is extensive. Water operations start up the Bellamy Reservoir, which is over 12 miles away from here, and they include our water treatment facilities in Madbury, P's, a pumping station in Newington, 10 supply wells, and over 190 miles of water distribution pipe that are all in operation 24 hours a day. On the wastewater side, similarly, there's over 100 miles of sewer collection pipes, 22 pumping stations, wastewater treatment facilities at P's and Pierce Island, again, all in operation 24 hours a day. So the budgets for all these operations are updated, excuse me, annually to include personnel costs, electrical, chemical, residual management costs, as well as all the routine maintenance costs that are needed to keep these facilities running. Next slide, please. So water and sewer revenues also pay for capital improvement projects. Regulatory compliance has been a major driver for some of our large capital projects over the past 10 years. Pierce Island Wastewater Plant was upgraded to meet the secondary treatment standards, including the nitrogen removal. Our Newington Booster Pumping Station was addressed, addressed disinfection byproducts. And PFAS is an ongoing concern that has required capital and is going to continue to require capital to address PFAS. We also have aging infrastructure that requires ongoing capital needs for replacement and upgrades. And this rate study will include analysis of all these operational and capital, capital costs included, including items in our capital improvement plan, and will identify the revenue needs for all those improvements. The rate study has these general goals. First, to update the rate model. The rate model is a tool that we use to forecast and assess the impacts to the enterprise funds with changes in our expenses and our revenues year to year. The rate study will identify the appropriate price for water and sewer services relative to the costs required to provide them. The rate and fees we charge need to be based on actual cost that it takes to provide these services. And finally, to make sure that our rates and fees are structured in a way that's equitable across the various types of customers that we have. Next slide, please. The rate study team, Stantec was selected to conduct the rate study. David Hyder is the senior principal at Stantec, leading the project, and he has assisted the city in the past with financial plans and a lot of rate models for the water and sewer enterprise fund. The rate study team also includes DPW, the Finance Department, city manager, and importantly, city council. So the involvement of city council will be very important in early 2026 to begin conducting work sessions, and ultimately, if and when policy decisions need to be made to implement any of the findings from the study. So the rate study process involves three general steps. Develop the financial plan that defines, defines the amount of revenue needed to meet the goals. These goals include the required expenses for our ongoing maintenance and operations, payment of debt associated with our capital expenses, and our anticipated capital required for future projects. Then the cost of service is evaluated, and this pertains to the actual cost provide, to provide the water and sewer services relative to various customers and their associated demands on the systems and resources. For example, customers that demand large amounts of water or that cause higher instantaneous demands on the system, they need the infrastructure there to be able to, to meet those demands. And there's cost of services associated with each of those kind of demands on the system. And finally, evaluating the most appropriate structure for recovering the needed revenue in an equitable manner. This involves an evaluation of fixed fees and tiered rate structures to make sure that no one is disproportionately affected by the cost of these services. And this process is detailed in Stantec's scope of work, where they will develop a 10-year financial plan, conduct a cost of service analysis, and evaluate the rate and fee structures. They're going to develop alternative rate structures for our consideration and evaluate our surcharge fees and our miscellaneous charges. They will prepare reports, update the rate model, and lead the work sessions with city council. So why are we doing this study now, besides it being good practice to do routinely? We are facing some challenges. We have critical investment needs, regulatory requirements such as the Greenland Well PFAS, ongoing maintenance needs, and need to replace aging infrastructure. All the while, costs are increasing for construction and ongoing operation and maintenance. We've also experienced changes in water use, both in quantity, as well as some changes in the types of customers that we have. And we're not alone with these challenges. This next slide is provided by Stantec that illustrates how water and sewer utilities around the country are all being challenged by increasing costs, reductions in water use, aging infrastructure, and additional regulations. So the next slide shows cost trends from the Federal Reserve economic data that were provided also by Stantec. These charts are examples of goods that relate to water systems. The one on the, on the left are water pipes. The one on the right are chemical costs. And these trend lines, the dash lines, were tread lines before COVID. And then COVID hit, and these costs went up 132%. The next slide shows the 132% for pipe increases, and chemical index for chemical costs went up 31%. That's between 2020 and 2023. Those costs jumped up so much. The next slide, similarly with construction costs. Between 2020 and 2023, general construction costs increased 33% and 40% for industrial construction. So we've seen similar increases in our operational capital costs, approximately around 20% over the same timeframe. So while costs have increased, for us, the amount of water we've sold has dropped by over 6%. As you see here, residential costs, residential water use has remained fairly stable over the past 10 years. Commercial, except during COVID, when more people were working from home, you see that little bump in residential water use. Commercial have been also relatively flat, though overall, we have about a 3% increase in water use from commercial users. But industrial dropped by 24% over the past 10 years, resulting in the overall loss of water use by 6%. And if we're collecting our revenue based on water use, this is where we're seeing what's happened in the past 10 years. So, and this is just a breakdown of, of how our customers are divided right now. We have 17% of our users are industrial, and commercial 41%, and the residential are 36%. So how we fund water and sewer services, the majority of our revenue for these enterprise funds comes directly from the amount of water that customers use and the water, associated water rates. Water and sewer is billed monthly. Our current rate structure has two tiers, where the first tier is a per-unit rate for up to 10 units per month, where each unit is used, is equal to 748 gallons. So for the first 7,480 gallons, you're paying that first-tier rate, any water used over that. Tier one, you're paying the tier-two rates. Tier-two rates are 20% higher for water than the tier-one rates, and 10% higher for sewer. So the cost for these, the difference in those two tiers are a couple of things. One is to really appropriate, appropriately capture the costs associated with those additional demands. So the higher users are demanding more on the system, thus there's a proportional need for more funds to support the infrastructure, to, to support them. And also, it helps to promote water efficiency, so people might think twice before they use more than 10 units every month. Also, irrigation rates are something that's going to be considered in this study. Irrigation is a high demand on water system infrastructure during the summer. Currently, we have a three-tiered rate with irrigation, but we'll be looking closer at that. Other rate revenue sources include fees and other sources such as grants and special agreements, like the agreement we have with the Air Force to operate the P's PFAS treatment facility. Water and sewer rates are reviewed annually and adjusted as needed to meet the funding needs. However, there's also a balance here between what's an acceptable increase in rates and our capital improvement plan, and we always have to, to balance what we get done certain times to be able to pay for them all. So every year here, you see over the history, past 10 years, there were four years where the water rates weren't adjusted at all. Over this 10-year period, the average increase in the water rate was 2.6%. And keep that in mind with those increases that I mentioned before. The sewer rates have been steadily increased, about 4% per year over the past 10 years. And this was carefully planned to help pay for the Pierce Island wastewater plant upgrade, since that was such a massive cost. So overall, the combined water and sewer rates over the past 10 years have increased an average of 3.9% per year. So in addition, in addition to the revenue from the water use, there is revenue from fees. There's a fixed water service fee per month for having a water service. This fee has been $4.95 per month for a typical residential service for over 20 years. Typically, fixed service fees are intended to provide a consistent revenue stream to help offset debt payments associated with capital investments. And I'll try to give a little analogy here. Say, I buy a car for my son. I take out a loan for that car. He agrees to pay me every time he uses that car, but then he decides not to drive that car very much. Maybe he just drives it in the summertime, and I still have these monthly payments I need to pay on my loan, and I'm not getting that income from him. Similarly, with fixed rate fees for the water and sewer, I'm here to at least help offset the, any variability in the revenue stream that we're having, so we can keep on paying the debt down. So our fixed water service fee right now accounts for 7% of the revenues relative to the metered water use amount. The industry standard for this is 15 to 30%. So this is something that Stantec will be looking at to see if, if we adjust our, our service fees. There are also a number of other fees here that are associated with the water and sewer utilities. It'll be evaluated. Many of these have not been modified, because they require this type of a rate study to be able to, to justify these type of changes. So this is something we'll be looking at. And we need, really need to make sure that the cost for providing each one of these services is directly related to the amount it costs us to provide those services, including personnel costs, material costs, and resource-related costs. The next slide shows the project schedule. A work session with city council is currently scheduled tentatively for Wednesday, January 14th at 6:00 PM. That'll be the big kickoff with city council. And depending on the outcome of that work session and the draft materials provided by Stantec at that point, we will then schedule additional public meetings and work sessions as advised. That's it. Any questions?
Counselor Bagley.
Thanks, Your Honor. A couple of quick questions, but first I just want to thank the, the good work that you guys do, both in, you know, getting federal grants and also the land preservation, especially around the Bellamy Reservoir. It's a, it's a big job, and you guys do an excellent job with it. The one caveat I'd put going into this is, when we were negotiating the Newcastle sewer rate, I, I felt that the lost opportunity cost of having the sewer plant on Pierce Island wasn't really captured. So if there's any costs, overhead-type costs, like for instance, when we did the work in Durham, and the council and city staff had to go there and walk the land because it involved easements and things like that. I just hope that those types of costs would be captured and shared by the, the other communities that use our water supply.
Yes, absolutely. Counselor Mara.
You said in your presentation that industrial uses are down. I'm curious, is that because there's less industrial businesses, or are they actually being more water-conscious and using water better?
Both.
Okay.
Both, yeah. Some, we've lost some industry, and I think there is more efficient water use with industry right now.
A major loss of an industrial customer was the Schiller Plant.
Thank you, Al, for, for this. Appreciate the, the discussion on the tiering. I think that there will be a lot of folks interested in understanding how we can get the, both the tiering to reflect the usage and the demands. Obviously, with more, it requires us to have more and to provide more, you know, more updates on pipes, et cetera. But also, you know, as we've kept residential relatively, you know, the same as we've added into residential to encourage that type of behavior. So the more tiering that we can have, you know, outside of one and two tiers, I think would be really effective for the conversation from Stantec as it gets back to the city council to understand what is available for us, and then, you know, weigh the trade-offs that come with those, if there's an additional tier in there as well. Thank you, Al. You're welcome. All right. Back to our public hearings, and just as a, so this is public hearing, second reading. In discussing the, the, the. In discussing the agenda with the city manager, she did have an update on, where is the?
Is under public hearing.
Public hearing number I?
I.
Yes. Would like to pull that up, because I think there is a pertinent information item that we will be able to discuss with us. So I would wait a motion to bring up item?
You said five.
I? No. The public hearing, under public hearing, item I.
So move your.
Or second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City manager, as a part of the, I guess, discussion on this, can you bring or explain the situation with Illinois Denny?
Sure. Aside from the two recommendations for both the Historic District Commission and the Planning Board, you know, programmatically and administratively, the contractor had been working with staff on a path forward and was issued a permit to do the work, which isn't considered in-kind in the Historic District, which would involve cedar siding. So this permit was issued on November 12th, and the work is proceeding.
Okay. With that, there is no, just to clarify, the work has been permitted and it is, it is ongoing.
Correct.
At this, at this stage. So there is nothing now keeping us, or that we would have to act on in order to effectuate this homeowner to be able to close up her house before winter.
That is correct.
Counsel Boylock.
Your Honor, with that new information, I'll make the motion to move to table this public hearing.
Second.
Given that Ms. Rayburn can, you know, is allowed to side her house with materials she can afford, with no additional cost, there's no, I see no reason to remove this from the Historic District overlay. I think it should remain in the Historic District, it is a historic house. So I think this is kind of a win-win for the city board.
Just a point of order, if you're going to table it, it should be to a specific date, or you can postpone indefinitely.
Definitely.
Okay. I'll move to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Appreciate the work of city staff and being able to deliver an outcome. Hopefully, this will be taken up under the master plan and discussed in a broader context of Portsmouth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you again to city staff and for those that have reached out on that. Next is the, a lot of public hearings. And so we're going to ask Attorney Farini to begin these presentations. We will discuss them. As public comment arises, we will have public comment. We will then continue back to the presentation. So folks will see the presentation up for a portion of the time. And so with this is public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 6, Licenses, Article 1, General Provisions by amending the title of Chapter 6 to Licenses and Incumbrances and replacing Article 1 in its entirety with Article 1, Incumbrance Permits and Licenses for Use of Public Property, Section 6.101 through 6.110. Now we have the presentation. Attorney Farini.
Thank you. I think Counselor Cook was going to give an intro before the presentation.
Oh, great.
On behalf of the Governance Committee.
Yes, yep. Take it away.
Thank you, Attorney Farini. Thank you, Mayor. I'm opening this discussion because this is coming forward from the Governance Committee after considerable amount of work on incumbences. Now, the general public doesn't really encounter this on a regular basis until they decide to pull a permit for construction of their house and they need a dumpster out front. So incumbences can be confusing, I think. And so people will say, well, why did the Governance Committee take this up? It's because we have incumbences in multiple places throughout our ordinance, and that is even more confusing for the general public, for our businesses. And it's really important to put things in a, in a way that are very understandable, so anybody who's applying for a permit or a license for an encumbrance knows where to go to find that information, can easily access the information, and can apply very easily. And so that's really the goal, that the Governance Committee, why the Governance Committee is bringing forward all of these public hearings, it's not just the first one, all the public hearings from this point on are related to this one change to incumbences. And the goal is to bring everything together into one place, so it's really obvious the way encumbrance works. And when we talk about encumbrance, we're talking about usage of city property. That means if somebody puts a chair out on a sidewalk, or an A-frame out on a sidewalk, or even hangs a sign in the airspace above city property, that is all an encumbrance of city property. If you're doing construction on your house and you want to put a dumpster out front on the street, that's an encumbrance of city property on the street. So all of these things are just ways that we use city property, and making it simple to understand, I think, is really critical for our residents and our businesses to know how to operate.
Thank you. And we have our little PowerPoint that's up on the screen. And what this does, it attempts to very much simplify what we're trying to do for the new Article 1 for Chapter 6, and also will explain all the other public hearings on your agenda for this evening. Basically, it's a matter of cutting and pasting. So the main thrust, obviously, is this Chapter 6, but because we've consolidated all the other aspects of incumbences throughout all of the several city council policies, that's why there's so many public hearings, because we need to get rid of the parts that we've put in this new chapter that's before you. So what was the goal of the Governance Committee to bring forward this amendment? Number one, as Counselor Cook has said, is to consolidate. A lot of the staff, various departments deal with the public in helping them process their applications for encumbrance permits. And as Counselor Cook said, and as the Governance Committee saw through various staff coming before to explain sort of the process for how we actually issue incumbences, that they were all over the place. And it's hard for someone who's new to an application process to know where to go. So the goal was to put it all in one place. The second goal, obviously, is to update language. We have some obsolete sections, we have some obsolete language, and so the goal is to try to, try to do that whenever we look at an ordinance. And the other goal of the committee was to improve transparency and improve efficiency. And part of that I will speak to in more detail as we move forward with the slides. Next slide, please. So I will not be doing a separate presentation for what's on your agenda for D, E, F, G, and H. Those are what's on this slide right here, but I do want to address briefly, these are the portions that were transferred from these existing chapters to what's before you this evening, which is Chapter 6, Article 1, Sections, Section 101 through 110. So you see right before you, the Chapter 6 edit was on theatricals, parades, and open-air meeting. The construction permit was referenced in Chapter 7. Various other types of incumbences were referenced in Chapter 8. And Chapter 9 included other public way obstructions. And H was an old reference, that licenses would be referred to the planning board. We've never had that practice as far as I can recall. So also, in addition to all of these chapters, if Chapter 6 passes, third reading, then there will be two city council policies that will need to be rescinded, because those policies have also been incorporated into the language for this Chapter 6, Article 1. So basic housekeeping, I would say, for the rest of the public hearings. But certainly, if there are any questions about any of those public hearings, I'd be happy to answer them for the council. Next slide. So what have we put in this particular article? We've, we've listed the encumbrance permits. Some of these encumbrance permits have not been codified before. It's just been known that you apply for some of these, but they didn't live in any ordinance. So what we have now, we have projecting signs and awnings, flags, A-frame signs, tables, chairs and benches, planters, mannequins and clothing racks. And I didn't know about the mannequins, so you might not be alone if you didn't know that we allowed mannequins to encumber our city property. And then we made some changes to short-term construction permits. And so what we found in looking at all of these chapters is, what is our current practice? What are some of the problems? And I think that's very well illustrated in short-term construction, which is, which is before you in Chapter 6, Article 1. What we find in practice, incumbences were issued for 30 days for, for construction projects, and that's somebody encumbering a sidewalk, putting a scaffolding up, those sorts of things. What's challenging is after 30 days, we would come forward for a license for the city council. Well, oftentimes, with a short-term encumbrance, there are weather conditions, there are delivery, you know, issues that arise during any construction project. So what the Governance Committee recommends the council approve in this amendment before you this evening is to allow another 30-day extension for that 30, so that staff would be able to extend an encumbrance permit from 30 to 60. And then if there was a further request to go beyond 60 for another 30 days, then that could be, that could be granted by the city manager, so that licenses wouldn't, wouldn't be coming before the council for a, you know, 45-day encumbrance. And that was a change based on feedback that the Governance Committee received from staff and, and reporting that, you know, sometimes our folks who pull a 30-day encumbrance permit aren't familiar with the scheduling of licensing in the city council meetings. So it, it could become quite, you know, quite more complicated perhaps than it, than it needed to be. So, so that explains that particular change. And then licenses, you, you have them come forward before you, you'll still be having them come forward beyond, for construction, beyond 90 days, but you see various other types of licenses. And so we've listed them here in Chapter 6, Article 1. Public utilities, you see those coming forward. Again, the long-term construction license, which if this passes, would be beyond 90 days. Certain encroachments, when steps encroach into our roadway or a little portion of a road, you see those, and we record those at the Registry of Deeds. Valet agreements, although that was in our fee, fee schedule, it wasn't really listed in, in the, in licenses or anywhere in our ordinances. And then obviously, other uses of public property. You have requests coming forward on the Coast Guard using a slip, we have licenses for Prescott Park. So there's all other types of licenses that the city council grants on a regular basis. Next slide, please. So what did they, what did the Governance Committee try to do? Delete obsolete, obsolete provisions. We don't have a big call for news racks in our sidewalks anymore, so that particular section would be deleted. And I already previously mentioned, what's up on your slide is that referral to the planning board, which licenses have not gone to the, to the planning board, in, at least in the time that I've worked for the city. And listing new permits. So one of the things that you are, might be learning about right now, except if you're in the Governance Committee, is that we are putting together a special event permit to help the applicant navigate a process, which at first blush seems quite simple, but does involve a lot of city departments. And so we've had staff reach out to all the departments, create a permit that is going to be tested by staff, and then tested by some applicants, and then hopefully introduced for a few reasons. One is to sort of standardize what comes before you, the city council, for a special event. We have lovely letters from nonprofits that talk about their mission, but sometimes they don't mention the things that they actually are asking you to approve for the special event. So part of our process and discussion will help that process along and vet some of that information, so the council will get a standardized form for special events that come, that will come forward. And we also want, it's also going to help the applicant, because when they can look on, on our permitting system, which is currently OpenGov system, they can see what's missing, the thing that hasn't been done, and link to other permits that are required. Because not only do folks need a special event permit, sometimes if they have a tent, they need a building permit, or they need, you know, health department has to inspect for food. So those, those permits are also listed in the ordinance to let people know that these, you know, other permits and other steps are required. So we, we did that as part of this amendment before you. And then, as I've discussed before, many things aren't listed but are, are now listed in, in this amendment. Next slide, please. So improving efficiency. We don't want to hear about it after someone's done something without a permit, right? What we hope this will bring also is public awareness, and so we can help with our, with our great team of folks who do the communication here and work on our websites as well, that obviously isn't before you for task, but it's part of these conversations that, that have started as a result of this amendment, to help with the outreach, you know, to improve our, our websites and information on, on our websites. And then, again, any, when we can put a process on our OpenGov system, it's much easier for an applicant to see what's required, what steps need to be done, and to be able to communicate directly with those staff members that oversee those particular steps. So, you know, that, that is another, I think, improvement as far as not just special events, but some of these, some of these other, some of these other permits that are coming forward. And again, advising the public, letting them know what's expected and what's asked. And so the, the next thing that we're doing for the, from the transparency perspective is, how are these things going to come to you now? One of the things that is in the ordinance is there will be a report. So you'll have a list coming to council for incumbences on a regular basis. So there's awareness. I think some of the Governance Committee members were concerned that they hear from residents there weren't awareness, and they didn't know, you know, that this, this particular, this particular license was coming forward or an encumbrance. So that's one way to bring awareness to what's going on in the city. And when you accept a report, you, you endorse its action. So that's another way that the council is going to still be very active, as well as obviously approving licenses that come, as they always have come forward. An appeal process was created if, if someone was denied a permit, and that is a new thing. That, that was something, again, that the Governance Committee felt was important based on feedback. And then, as I've already mentioned, we'll be publishing the rules and the regulations for these permits, updating those to make sure that there's information that accompanies these permits through our system, so people know what's asked of them and what's expected of them. And so the last slide. Next steps, this isn't the only bite at this apple, as they say, so this is the first section of Chapter 6 that we're revising. From our last meeting, Governance hopes to continue to revise Chapter 6. A lot of our ordinances are a bit out of date, and as you can see from these subjects, hawkers and peddlers, vendor parking spaces, taxis, these, this, the many, many pages in Chapter 6 address, and other chapters address these issues. We can shorten those, hopefully. And also, the business activities that we regulate through licensing, many of those are obsolete and out of date. And so what the Governance Committee intends to do is to keep working through this chapter and hopefully make it more user-friendly and for, for the council to understand, the public, and even staff. And that's all I have for our presentation.
Thank you, Attorney Farini. Couple of questions. Counsel Boylock.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank Attorney Farini for your presentation, and I thank the Governance Committee for all the work on this, and city staff. I did have one question, a little confusion, and I had some other business owners reach out. On the 6.103, there's the temporary encumbrance permits for use of public property, and then A is projecting signs and awnings. I mean, the first time I read this, it asked for an annual permit, so I was like, well... So I was like, whoa, every single sign that the planning board approves will have to ask for their approval annually? And then I noticed the temporary encumbrance permits, you know, title before that. So is this referring to permanent, this isn't referring, this is only referring to temporary signs, not permanent signs or awnings?
Well, this actually is, all licenses for signs that are attached to buildings are actually revocable. So even though we use the word permanent, the term is indefinite, but they're all revocable licenses. The intent of the Governance Committee when we addressed this was to make sure there was a renewal process, because we are now requiring certificates of insurance for overhanging signs. So I think the thought was, and I understand there was some discussion today about it, was to just have a renewal process, not a new application fee, not a new permit itself, but simply to renew it to make sure that we have those certificates of insurance associated with projecting signs.
To me, that just sounds like a lot, a lot, a lot of work, a lot of paperwork for the planning department, a lot of work for small businesses, uncertainty for small businesses, because you, obviously, when you buy a sign, you admit it's an investment, they're not cheap. And just another challenge in cost, yeah, I'm not for this at all. I mean, we have a history of, you know, awnings in our businesses down Congress Street, and that's, you know, very historic. But now asking for permission every single year, and I just can't imagine the amount of work that's putting on the city staff alone. That just sounds crazy and unnecessary, and it doesn't have any benefit. Yeah, is my opinion.
And Counsel Buck, Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that there's some confusion around this particular provision. And the confusion is that when you purchase a sign and you design a sign to hang outside your building, that somehow you affix it and it's permanent, that you're allowed to have that sign indefinitely. But that's actually not true. The city, these are all revocable licenses. And in fact, the city at any time can come back to you and say, we need this space for something else. For example, to hang electrical lines or, so these are not permanent licenses, even though people spend a lot of money on these signs. That said, I want to be really clear, the city has no intention of changing the way that it operates with regard to these signs. And right now, because of the requirement to have certificates of insurance on a regular basis, the city is instead chasing down certificates of insurance rather than just having people submit it on an annual basis. So the intention is not to deny a permit request to have your sign continue, it's to make sure that you're submitting your certificate of insurance for the city, and so the city's not spending a lot of time trying to track that down from you.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you. I was going to echo what Counselor Cook said. The hope of this is actually to expedite staff time, because staff is chasing certificates of insurance for these buildings, for these signs. And so in this process, you'll get a simple renewal notice, the same way we all do through the Cloud Viewpoint website, OpenGov. I just Googled Portsmouth Cloud Viewpoint. And you'll get a notification, you'll upload it, staff will be able to see it and move on. Instead of, as they're doing now, I understand you disagree, Counselor Blalock, but as they are doing now, staff is chasing down the certificates of insurance. So the hope now is to, again, streamline the process as an automatic renewal. There is no additional cost, there's no additional fee, there's all the permit holder would have to do is upload their certificate of insurance the same way they do in every other regulatory process in the city. And as a small business owner, I think it's okay.
When did we change to requiring a certificate of insurance?
When we realized that we hadn't, like, a few months ago, because it overhangs city property, so if it should fall...
So how long have we been chasing down certificates of insurance?
Well, we do them for A-frame signs, and we chase certificates of insurance for all our permits.
I've been chased.
So I guess, so I think what's maybe getting, it's a little confusing, is that we had previously not required a certificate of insurance on projecting signs. Is that correct?
Perhaps. I don't know, I can't speak to why people are confused, but that could be a reason.
Is that, well, is that a knowable, like, is that a knowable thing? Do we know when we did, did we start requiring a certificate of insurance? Counsel Cook?
Well, I can say from personal experience, from being part of a nonprofit that had an event this year, it was the first time we had to produce a certificate of insurance, was this year. So that has been fairly recent, and that was for use of the public forum space. We had to produce a certificate of insurance, which we had not had to do in the past. So it's a fairly recent...
And is this, sorry, is this a slowdown from Primex? I guess from a...
No, no, no. It's just...
What was the change that we require a certificate of insurance for?
Because when we were reviewing all these permits and putting them up, we realized that we require certificates of insurance for A-frame signs, and we require them for planters and everything. But what was missed was projecting signs. And as you might recall, there have been some signs that have fallen in the city. And if that happens, we want to make sure that we're named as an additional insured.
The city is?
Yeah. Just like every other encumbrance listed in this particular chapter. Everyone has to provide a certificate of insurance to use our property temporarily.
Okay. I guess I'm, like, maybe not the place to do it, but would love to know if there's a, like, in terms of streamlining things, if, like, do we have the legal opinion that we are exposed if a sign is approved by the city in terms of being affixed and it falls and injures somebody? Do we have the legal opinion that we are liable of approving that sign?
We've not rendered a particular opinion in that regard, but certainly we would be named, because it's our property.
Would this prevent us, like, is this certificate of insurance preventing us from being named?
No, it's requiring them to indemnify us and insure so that we're not liable, that the applicant is liable in the event that there's an event or something damages.
I guess, like, the, I understand, I guess, like, the issue that I'm trying to, or at least unpack here, is that we're trying to streamline this. And in the effort of streamlining it, we found another thing to put on to a business owner, from a standpoint of now requiring a certificate of insurance and then an annual permit fee, or an annual permit reapplication for the sign. And while I think the intention is good, the effect of is just to now require an additional layer of bureaucracy on top of this. And I yet have, I guess I am not having no, have we ever, I guess, I would question the A-frame sign ordinance certificate of insurance. Have we ever used our certificate of insurance when an A-frame has impacted another, I guess, resident or visitor to unname ourselves and a claim against that business or the city? I guess I'm trying to figure out how big of a problem this is.
Can I address that just a minute?
Sure.
Generally speaking, so what we're doing is trying to protect the city from liability for some accident. When somebody is using our property, we are going to be liable if something, if an event happens and someone is injured on our property, we could be liable. And if it's a result of an A-frame sign or a projecting sign that falls onto the sidewalk, the city is going to be liable. So in order to protect ourselves, we have always had these certificates of insurance for the A-frame signs and other encumbrances, other uses of city property. Anytime we have a construction project going and someone wants to use our sidewalk, we have a certificate of insurance. Anytime we have a special event, we have a certificate of insurance. That protects us from liability, that indemnifies us, so that if there is a lawsuit, there is an insurance policy that is going to cover the liability. And that's the best practice legally for the city to be in, to have that type of insurance coverage. It doesn't create a significant burden other than the submission of a piece of paper, practically speaking. What you're asking, what we're asking for is a piece of paper to be uploaded into the OpenGov system on an annual basis.
I guess, like, the difference that I see in this, and I'll get off the, I'll let other counselors speak to it, but the difference in the A-frame, as I understand it, and a projecting sign, is that one is on the property and one is over the property. We, I don't believe that we require a permission for shutters that may exist over the property. I think that there's a big difference between something that could happen onto the property and something that resides on the property. And I would like to make sure that we, and there's not an onus to the business owner, you know, it's small, but the idea that we're changing this to require a certificate of insurance where something was not required before as a certificate of insurance is rather large. And I don't see, I guess I see, I understand the definition of property, the city property, city sidewalk, things on the city sidewalk. I have a hard time expanding that to things that overlook city property, because I think that's sort of a slippery slope in that we're going to start finding things that we might require certificates of insurance that are simply not even business-related, but could be residential-related or other things that may impact the city property and not definitively are not encumbering the city property. But Counsel Bagley and then Counsel Cook.
Thanks, Your Honor. My concern is the annual. I do think it creates non-due burden on the businesses. I'd be okay with something like a five- or 10-year renewal. What I'm thinking about specifically as an example is the sign that's no longer there. That's the big brewery mug. It was there for 30 years. It was approved by the city. If there was going to be an issue where it was going to fall down, somebody would probably notice it and, you know, say, hey, you got an issue or something like this. This sounds to me like we're creating a ton of paperwork. We're creating a new insurance policy that businesses have to pay for. And what we're going to do in the long run is prevent things like that mug, and we're going to end up with a bunch of generic, kind of cheesy, cheap signs that are super easy to insure. And we're going to take some of that character and individuality out of our city.
Your Honor.
Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whether or not we adopt these changes, people are going to have to produce a certificate of insurance for their signs, because that's the policy now, from the city staff side, from our legal department side. So you don't, you can choose not to adopt any of these changes, and that's not going to change what you're concerned about, because that's the legal department's policy. It is not, it's not part of the changes to this ordinance.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Doesn't the city council set policy?
Well, the legal department provides legal advice, and we would hope that you would follow our legal advice when it comes to liability for the city.
Yes.
So we have instituted a policy of obtaining insurance policies, certificates of insurance for the use of city property in almost every other venue and occasion that we have for use of city property. And it may have been an oversight in years prior that we didn't get those for projecting signs, but we believe it's necessary to protect the city from liability to get those certificates of insurance at this point.
Yes, but my question is, who sets the policy?
The city council sets the policy.
Thank you.
Your Honor, just a...
Assistant, I guess, where did the policy change on the, in terms of requiring a certificate of insurance for things that are not on the property but extend over the property?
We've always regulated our encumbrances over city property. We've always seen them as encumbrances. Projecting signs, flags, awnings have always been part of our encumbrance ordinances. We regulate that because they are in, they're over city property, they're in the city domain, they're in the city airspace. So we have always regulated them. What we haven't apparently done is protect ourselves from damages that could be sustained as a result of those encumbrances.
Is that the way we've had the authority to regulate what signage goes up?
Yes, the projecting signs, yes.
And by projecting, like, I guess, that's, so without, like, that interpretation, would we not have the ability to regulate signs that are extending into the public?
Without, I'm sorry, I lost the question.
Sorry, without, like, viewing them as an encumbrance, would we have the ability to regulate them and change them?
Well, they're encumbrances because they're burdening city property. That's...
This is more nuanced, so like, the, I guess the city property has...
Maybe I could give you an example. So the existing policy that the council adopts every year is a flag policy, and, you know, an overhanging. And the thing is, one of it says is you have to be so many feet above, you know, the sidewalk. Now, if we didn't regulate that, then someone could put a sign at five feet, and you certainly would bump into it when you walked under it there. So this is an existing policy we've had. We're actually going to edit, take away that council policy over, you know, the flags and then the awnings, and we've just put it here in that, in the list that you see before you.
So I, sorry to spend so much time on this, but how would it be different if, would we think that a, would a person walking on the street who was injured by an air conditioning unit falling out of a second-floor window, would the city be held liable for that?
Not if we didn't approve it being affixed to that window, but when we approve something being affixed to the building that's overhanging our sidewalk, then we become liable. So we're approving the permits for these signs. We're allowing the projecting signs, the flags, the awnings. And when we do that, and we're regulating that, then we develop liability for...
All right. Makes sense.
Just a point of clarification for Counselor Bagley's. This doesn't require new insurance. Everyone who operates has a C, an insurance certificate that extends a certain rate, at least when you're selling alcohol, you have another level of insurance that extends a certain radius outside your door, typically 100 feet, into the city right away. And within that, including just an A-frame, tables, chairs, including ones that are not part of outdoor dining, you have to provide a certificate of insurance. So within that, like, there are annual timeframes that you get a letter every year or an email that says it's time for this. So I would assume within the trusted guidance of our staff, in our clerk's office, in our enforcement office, this could be all looped within the same time period. Every year, the same time period, you renew for your planters that go outside, for your A-frames that go outside, and all of that falls underneath the same one single document. You don't have separate, I understand your pointing, but you don't, I just want to make sure that you understand that there's not 18 different versions of a certificate of insurance. You have one through your insurance provider.
Okay. Just last question on the insurance bit, and then I'll get off of this. So I agree that we've approved these.
Your Honor, it is after 10:30.
Oh, we'll take a wait a motion to go past 10:30.
So moved.
Second.
How in favor? Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Opposed.
How many opposed? Are we going to, how many? Do we have?
Really? I'm always opposed.
This is way too complicated.
One, two, three, we have four opposed? All right.
Opposed as well.
So we're not going past 10:30? So we're readily scheduling a meeting for...
Point of order.
We have a, just so we're clear, when are we going to...
Can we do a roll point of order?
Wait, just do a roll call.
A roll call vote.
Can I, is this commentable? Because I'm about to be extremely offended that...
We're going to take a roll call vote. I would ask that we, I would ask that we consider whether or not we're going to be able to schedule another city council meeting at this. I understand that it's annoying to have discussions that go into 10:30, but if we are not willing to do so, that's going to mean that we're going to reschedule a vote. So I'd ask you to seriously consider whether or not we're going to continue the public dialogue on this. There's two contracts that are waiting for after this, and if we're going to delay those because we don't want to go past 10:30, that's another conversation that we'll have at another time. So we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes, go past 10:30.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Blalock?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
No.
Counsel Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Motion passes each one.
And yes, myself.
Oh, Mayor!
So just to, I understand that we approved these, so we have the responsibility to require... So just to, I understand that we approved these, so we have the responsibility to require insurance on them. That makes sense on, on a litigious world that we live in. What I would like to know and would ask the governance committee to consider in the future, if there are things that we no longer need to approve, if we can provide guidelines for compliance and enforce the guidelines around compliance, we would get out of the requirement of having to have a certificate of insurance, as I understand it, and to provide, you know, there are other cities that do this that provide simple, you know, we wouldn't get fees for any of this, but we provide simple measurements that you'd have to comply to and Jason would enforce those. We would get out of the position of having to enforce any of these or require insurance on any of these and we would, out of the liability business. But I understand from a liability standpoint, we can't not do this because we approve these.
So with air conditioning units that go in windows, you know, hang over hang, those need insurance too?
They don't because we don't approve those. If we were to approve them...
But if it overhangs, right, because I know they've fallen out of windows on stations.
Yep, so as it was, as I understand it, and it was sufficient to me, is that the act of approving these from a permitting standpoint, we approve, so we approve, we do approve permits or we approve signs, awnings, et cetera. Because we are approving those, we could be liable. We do not approve air conditionings, units to go into, and I hope we never do.
No, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to be safe, you know.
And if we get into the position of being able to move these from permits to suggestions that we will enforce or guidelines that we enforce, we would get out of the business of having to require insurance on these. But we're not there yet and this is a step towards doing that because we will consolidate to these one page and hopefully we'll get to a point where we can, we can eliminate them as well. Counselor Bagley?
I know some of the sidewalks downtown are not public property. So overhangs, for instance, on sidewalks that are private property, where do, where do they fall?
I don't know if we've been approving signs, projecting signs that hang over private property or not.
What if the city has the public right of way though, even though it's private property? Then I think we still need to.
Counselor Moreau?
I just want to make sure, and maybe it's the way this is worded, it sounds like you actually have to apply for an annual permit, but the way I'm understanding it now is you're really not applying for an annual permit. Every year, you just need to annually submit your insurance that you already have. And most likely, if you have one of these other encumbrances, you already need to do it. So that's all. We're not asking for fees, we're not asking for the, I mean, I have to renew five insurance policies for myself and my business every year. And a lot of it has to do with the liability and what I do, but everyone in their business already does this every year. So just when you renew it, you submit it to the city and it should be a way that we could just have them submit it once that would cover any encumbrance that they might have during that period of time. Is that all correct?
It would be a renewal at no cost, yeah. And there could be an amendment that could be made right now at second hearing to clarify that so we could move on, which, which might, might work. It might help the public. And then the city attorney would opine whether or not that's a substantial change, which would need to renotice a second hearing, but I'm seeing a smile, so perhaps the answer to that is no.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an amendment to offer that may provide some clarification. In section 6.103A, after the word "an annual permit, comma, renewable for no additional charge, comma, may be issued," and also in section B, "an annual permit, comma, renewable for no additional charge, comma, may be issued."
No.
So that clarifies that these are renewals, not new permits?
Second.
Is this a substantial change, city attorney?
No.
Counselor Bagley to speak on the amendment to this?
What would be the disadvantage of just striking the word "annual" from A and B? So a permit may be issued because the city already has the authority to revoke a sign if it's not in com, in compliance because it's a revocable license. And that would take away the confusion from the store owners, I think.
Yeah, I, I would support all of that. I'll just say as a, as a business owner, and I even brought this to my father, and I just showed it to him and it was like, what do you think? What's your interpretation? And he read it and was like, oh my gosh, we'd have to apply for this every year? And then he goes, oh, no, it only attempts temporary encumbrances, so it's temporary signs, so permanent sign, we wouldn't have to do this. That was his interpretation. I'm just saying that, you know, as a layman, I showed a business owner, they're like, oh, I don't have to apply for this. So anything to make it more transparent and just easier to understand would help.
Just a point of order? You have a motion and a second on the amendment? Do you want to...
Well, we don't actually have a regular motion, so we are, haven't even had the public hearing yet, so maybe we need to move forward.
Right.
And then that can be an amendment to a motion for, future motion was what I was trying to get at.
The two thoughts on an emotion, one is what was just made and the other is to remove the word "annual." That's what I'm hearing.
Two possibilities, but let's hear from the public first, shall we?
Okay.
Yeah, again.
Any other questions before?
A point of clarification, as a business owner, are you not required to get your certificate of insurance reissued or renewed annually?
You are. You are.
So if you are...
Yeah.
It is required.
Because you yourself would not be insured.
Okay, so since people, since businesses are required to do that anyway, it should not be overly cumbersome to submit that, that annual...
It should not. A permit would be issued if there can be a point of, an annual permit while we listen to public comment, if there is any, to think about if there is a, a way to, I think, get the intent of this is that a permit will be issued dependent upon annual certificate of insurance being provided, you know, in the course of business so that a per, a permit can be revoked, you know, if it's not, if certificate of insurance has not been, you know, approved or something along those lines. But I don't want to workshop, or workshop this and I feel confident of the, what we're doing, our authority to do it, or my dislike of having to do it, but I understand the litigious nature of this and it's different than an air conditioning unit, the example that I used. So perfect to be able to make the point. But if we could figure that out during public comment, that would be great. Opening up the public hearing on this, rise, two for, against, the first of quite a few on these that hopefully will be clearer as we go on.
Good evening, Marie Bode, McNabb Properties, and speaking in opposition of your discussion that you've just had. First of all, for those of you that are business owners, yes, of course, you have to reapply and get new insurance every year, but I guarantee you of all the business owners that are here this evening, your renewal dates are not going to comply with when the city is going to ask you for your certificate of insurance. So while the city believes that they're correcting an issue that exists today, I can tell you for sure that our insurance renews for all 18 entities of ours, multi-tenanted building, multi-tenanted signage on the 26th of January. The application that's before you this evening for the Buckle's Market and Cafe, for example, is coming to you this evening. Maybe their renewals for everything next year, liquor, assembly, fire, anything that, as a restaurateur, they would have to do on an annualized basis is standard procedure. However, in a multi-tenant office building where we have the linear footage, we have whatever is required today based on the permitting requirements, we comply. We of course submit a certificate of insurance. The, the application that I had come for this board, excuse me, this council, for the hearth signage, we'd gone through all the effort, we'd gone through all the steps. Somehow along the way, there was a miscommunication and problems within the planning department. While you are looking at making this simpler, this discussion obviously clarifies that it's not any, it's not any clearer. You're asking for a certificate of insurance, which is not what you are remending this evening. I have no problem providing a certificate of insurance. I understand the logistics. You're also confusing the, the airspace versus the actual property that the city owns. And in the case I, I apparently heard this evening, there were two signs in the history of Portsmouth that might have been a problem. Jason Page walks the city streets day in, day out, looking for problems to report to tenants and owners of businesses. So I don't think that this is as big of an issue as the governance committee is making it out to be. I really, truly want you all to think to the, the letter of what you've written here tonight as a request for a second reading and a vote because you're not, you're not voting on something that's clear. You're just not. When we're placing a projecting sign on a brick building, you all saw Mark McNabb's letter to you today. There is a lot, a lot of preparation and epoxy and steel posts and Peter Hatney, who makes all of our metal frame signs. It's a project, it's an expense. And if at the recommendation of what's permitted tonight or presented tonight is at the discretion of the planning department to change on an annualized basis, that doesn't sit well with me. So I encourage you, please, to reconsider what, the motion that's on the table, how to make this cleaner. Remember that I'm not stating the insurance is not an issue, that we're not going to comply, but you don't know what you're asking in this request tonight. And I, I implore you to reconsider. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any for me.
Thank you, Marie. If we suspend the rolls to ask you, appreciate it if you would. Any further, any other speakers, additional speakers? The, let's just think about the calendar for a second. So we have, we have December 8th as a meeting and I would expect any meetings to occur on December 8th to be able to pass it within that night. I do think that there are, you know, again, I understand the oversight in terms of airspace. I understand that, and I hope that a business owner would understand, you know, we're looking for a legal, that if there's a, if we're in the act of approving, and I believe we should get out of the act of approving a lot of stuff, but if we're in the act of approving this, we are party to that and so we have to have some certificate of liability or a certificate of insurance. There doesn't seem to be any issue from the business owners of providing that. That has been stated by Marie, the one business owner that stayed to nearly 11 o'clock tonight this evening to discuss. It is also, I think, understood with the council. If we can bring this back at the 8th with adjustments to the language that could be quickly taken up on second reading and then third reading, I think that would be a time well spent. I understand that's not my motion and I'll defer to Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is actually no motion on the table at the moment, but I just want to emphasize that the governance committee did not change the process that we're going through. This is all currently in your ordinance. So we're just putting it all in the same place. This is not the part that we changed. So I think that that's really important to remember that this is not, all this concern around renewing licenses and this is what the practice is currently. And so you're asking to change current practice essentially. And the major changes that we made to this were in reporting to the council that we're not going to have as much requests, as many requests that come before the council. We're going to have regular reporting that comes to us, but we're not going to actually have these signs come to us in a regular approval way, the way that they're coming forward tonight. Everything's going to come as a report to the council instead. So we're actually removing some of the regulatory nature of the current approval process. And so I think it's really important to understand that no matter what you do, you could choose not to adopt the current language. We could look for a different language. It's not going to change the process that's in place currently unless you want to completely revamp what the staff is doing.
Yep, Counselor Tabor?
With respect to the good Counselor Cook, I had to go back and read the city council policy that we're currently operating under. And what we're currently doing is somebody applies for a permanent overhanging sign. Staff from the planning department recommends to the council what to do and then the council approves it and that's a permanent sign. So...
With a revocable license.
With a revocable license, correct. And so we have moved to quite a different situation where we ask for an annual permit. And I think that's important. I've had a chance to reflect over this. Obviously, I'm part of the governance committee and we try to think of everything, but then it goes out into the public on a night like this and we hear from the people who are actually affected. And I think we have to listen to that. I would favor some kind of language that was closer to what we're doing now.
I think Counselor Denton?
So I appreciate all the time and effort that went into this and I think it's a good idea to consolidate everything in one place. However, given it's almost 11 o'clock and we only have meetings left in December, I don't think there's a impetus to get this done this year. It might make sense. Take it up.
Well, I think we can still get it done this year. So at the second reading that would recur on this, there's one rock that we have to get through and that's the understanding that we have changed the policy of the city of Portsmouth to require certificates of insurance on projecting signs. It is a great point that, and I've asked for literally three years or maybe longer, why do we have to approve every sign? And business owners wonder, why do I have to wait for my sign to go up until you guys approve it? That seems pretty draconian. We've improved that process, but in the process of improving that process, we found that we need insurance for these things. And so that's, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but we can't approve things and not have some liability and we need to be indemnified for that liability on that when we approve things. What I would ask of the governance committee, if it's possible, is to articulate that an approval, a permit is, is granted, it is a, it is revocable and it is subject to insurance that would be required. The current, annually, the annual assurance that is required to be produced. That I think is a, is a, if we could have figured that out right now, I just don't know if we can figure out that language that would be required to get us to that point. Maybe the assistant mayor has it.
Your Honor, I, just an idea to toss out before a motion is made, to move forward everything pulling out A until wording could be presented. Is that, I guess that would be a parliamentary inquiry, could we do that? And then have second hearing again for just letter A under this with potentially clarified language.
What, I'd be happy to find a way to move forward. I'm processing your request. It's, I think that the motion to go forward through, you know, pass second reading could be taking A out.
Yes, that is my...
But then I think you would have to start over with a first reading on A. The other, and I may be out of order making this suggestion for some language, but I think what, the issue here is the language of an annual permit versus submission of the certificate of insurance. So if the sentence started upon submission of a certificate of insurance...
Renewal of per...
An, a permit would, shall be renewed for no additional charge with the rest of the language that is there. Because I think the intent was to renew, these are revocable licenses, but nobody's going to look at a projecting sign and say, take it down. And that's the concern that I'm hearing is that it sounds that way. So to clarify, if the purpose is just to get the certificate of insurance, then it would be a mandatory renewal assuming all the other provisions are, are complied with. And we could, we could work on that fairly quickly here if you just changed how you start that sentence. That's my suggestion.
I think that does it.
And again, you're not changing the intent that you've had all along, but you've made it, you've clarified the process for everybody.
Make the motion, somebody.
Does somebody can...
I'll make the motion. We moved to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the...
Do we move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 8th, 2025 city council meeting?
Second for discussion purposes.
Counselor Bagley?
So the issue I personally have is, is the word annual permit. I think we could.
Say that the license would be renewed?
Um, sorry, I jumped off it.
Renewal, we're going to change it to renewal.
Page 40.
Page 40.
Yes, I do.
So instead of an annual permit may be issued, a permit may be issued for signs and outings that are all of that, and at the end, annual confirmation of insurance is required. I think for somebody that doesn't watch this meeting and doesn't understand legalese, that's not going to scare them into thinking that they need to get a new permit every year. It sounds like what the city wants to do is ensure we have a mechanism in place that we can point to that a store owner will say, if I don't get the insurance, you can make me take my sign down. I think we're being a little overly aggressive in every year you have to confirm you have insurance in place, or we're going to take your sign down. Let's make it a little more passive.
Yeah, and I don't think that was the intent, but I think, you know, that, you know, there's always wordsmithing that can make things better here, so. And to address the concerns, I think, although Marie has her hand up too.
Did you raise your hand? We have to suspend the rules to allow Marie Bodie to speak on behalf.
Move we suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marie Bodie, McNabb Properties. Can I make two suggestions? One, that when the original license or permit is issued, much like we do in all of our leases, we have a sentence in the language of the lease that says that if our insurance, excuse me, if our tenant's insurance is ever canceled, then we as the lessor get notification by the insurance company. That would be very simple, very standard for any business owner that has insurance. For them, the city being named as additional insured, that is a caveat that is typically on every policy. The second is if you also change that the standard set forth by the city zoning ordinance at the time of original submission or something, because otherwise it's subject to change. If the city decided that this year we want the signs not to be less than eight feet, because Mayor McGeekren is a tall gentleman, and next year they say six feet. Presently, I believe it's seven feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the underside of the sign. That's great, but if, if next year you decide to make it 10 feet and we have to relocate the sign to a 10-foot elevation, I think that, the wordsmithing is really, really critical, and it's subjective. And I know it's quite late, so I just wanted to make those two suggestions. Mr. Gamester in the back of the room encouraged me to stand up and speak to you, so you can thank him.
Thank you, Mr. Gamester. Attorney Farini.
Hello. I just wanted to make a point that, that notification of cancellation of an insurance would only come to us if we had a certificate of insurance naming us as an additional insured in the first place, just as, just to make sure people knew that.
Okay. Is there, so the two, I guess, concerns, and I want to just make sure that the Governance Committee agrees with these concerns. And so the first is the, I guess, the thought that it's an annual, an annual reapply. And whilst things are revocable, the likelihood of things being revoked are relatively low. But if, I could see a world in which, you know, we might look at something that was passed and approved in prior years, and we change the zoning, and we want to then say, hey, this no longer complies, and we're just following the rules, but the zoning would change. Does this in our minds prevent that from occurring? That something would be grandfathered in if it was approved at a previous date to when zoning would be, the new zoning would be changed if they annually have to renew these every year?
Your Honor, in this renewal, it is not a reapplication, so you would not have to submit a graphic of the sign or anything like that. You were, you were, essentially what's going to come across the desk is the, is the, like the permit number. So there will be no, in my understanding, as we've talked at government, there will be no re-inspection, no reapproval of graphics.
There's no reapplication.
There's no reapplication. It's, it's simple renewal.
So as the council understands, it is put into amber at that time of when it was approved, and any reapplication, and just reading this into the record in case this is challenged in the future, we understand this to be, an application is made, it is approved, and it is reissued, provided that the, that the property owner continues to provide a certificate of insurance.
Yes, that is how we have discussed it in those simple, very simple terms in governance.
Some lawyer in the future is going to be very thankful or very upset that he has to watch all these kinds of meetings.
It's not a reapplication.
It's not a reapplication.
Yeah, it's the word is annual permit that gives the business owners, oh, I have to apply for this every year.
Okay, so we'll make a vote, and then we'll adjust the motion.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
A permit may be issued for signs and outings that are affixed to private property that project over airspace of public property. Signs and outings shall comply with dimensional requirements for height setbacks and dimensional standards set forth in the city's zoning when approved. A certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured shall be provided and noticed of it, sorry, I can't read my own writing now. And something to the point of a notice if insurance is canceled or not renewed or.
Shall be provided at the time of application and upon renewal of such permit.
No.
Because we're trying to get out of the renewal of the permit, and just if the insurance is canceled, the city would be notified.
Okay, great.
That's what I was trying to get at. At the end, I lost my ability to read my own writing.
If the insurance company would notify the city if it was constructed that way or the permit?
The insurance company would notify the city directly, and they can do that.
Would they?
Yes. Yeah. They absolutely do.
So we would have that on our original certificate? That any, any termination of the policy would result in a notice to the city?
I believe that is possible, yes. Yep.
I'd second that.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. So it's the zoning ordinance as, you know, when approved, so that it's only based off of that zoning ordinance. And then the certificate of insurance naming the city as an additional insured with future notices of any cancellation of policy.
To the city.
To the city, yeah.
Is that a motion?
If everyone, everyone seems to be nodding their heads yes, so yes, I will make this amendment to my original motion.
No, so if we can repeat it, because it was very wordy.
Yep, no, and honestly, most of it's already there. Alls I'm taking away at the part, at the, instead of an annual, just a permit.
Okay.
So you're just taking away the N in annual, and then adding at the N of that sentence, city zoning ordinance when approved, so that we know it only applies to the zoning when it's, at the time it's approved, not any future changes. And then the new sentence is the, a certificate of insurance.
Yep.
Naming the city as an additional insured with any cancellation or loss of policy notice to the city from the insurance company. I know that's still a little wordy, can probably cut out a few words, but I was having trouble writing in this little side thing here.
I second. Second, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I absolutely agree with this, this amendment is fine. But the one thing that I think is really important is the Governance Committee was trying very hard to make this more understandable to those applying, and part of understanding that is knowing that this is a revocable license. It's a revocable permit, that it is, that it's not permanent. And so I think that that's important, that people understand that these permits can be pulled.
And always has been.
And that has always been the case. So, so I think it's important that we have the term revocable in there somewhere if we're not going to have annual permit.
Revocable permit?
A revocable permit, just add the word revocable instead of annual. I'm amenable to that change.
They're already revocable, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
They already are.
It's clarifying language, that's the whole point.
You can revoke them.
Okay.
Yeah.
A revocable permit may be issued for signs, yeah.
All right, and it's seconded by Counselor Blaylock, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
My only thought, I'm just, this is me thinking out loud, that the word temporary encumbrance is a bit, you know what I mean, that's other, because to me, as a business owner, I have permanent signs and I have temporary signs, you know what I mean? If you're going to have a special for this week, you're going to put up a temporary sign. If you're going to, so to an owner, I just, I'll throw that out there, I don't know if that's.
Well, they're temporary because they're revocable.
Yeah.
Well, can we just, because.
But to me, it's saying like, I, I, see what I'm saying? Like, the temporary encumbrance, to me, means a sign that I'm going to take down in two weeks, where the, the permanent sign would be the one I'm going to leave up, I've left up for the last 50 years. You know, like, that's.
You're, you're pulling at strings at this.
I know, I know, I want to make sure I'm, well, we're doing all this work and making all this sausage, I want to make it right. I don't want to put out a policy that then business owners are still reading temporary encumbrance, and I'm like, no, this is my permanent sign.
Temporary could be 50 years. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm asking, is this clear?
There are no permanent signs.
Okay. Counselor Bagley?
I will support Counselor Morrow's motion. To Counselor Blaylock's point, the section heading is where it says temporary encumbrance permits for use of public property, and this would have to be a separate motion, but we could say temporary encumbrance slash revocable permits.
No, I think we're good on this. Yeah, well, sorry, I don't want to, I think we've.
Renee's saying you on that one.
That's what happens at 11.
Effort, we've changed it so that we are making it clear that what continues is a revocable permit. We are stating that it does not need to be renewed unless insurance, or will be notified if insurance is lost. And so we get to the same point that we are, with the added benefit of not having to go towards the city council to approve any of these. So you go and you work with the city staff, you get it approved administratively, and you put up your sign, and you don't have to wait if you're on a two-week off period of the city council to come before us. So this is better than where we are, and it doesn't change, and I think it still makes clear what we're trying to achieve, and that's now protecting the city from things that we probably should have, or were required to do before. All right, so we have the motion on the floor.
We have two, we have an amendment.
Yep, and we have amendment, so we have the amended, or so we have a motion to amend the, we have a motion to amend the motion.
Yes, we do that first.
Yep. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now we have the motion as amended on the, on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's one out of eight, so.
Yeah, six.
And out of six.
One of six, yeah.
Let's go. So we've gotten the presentation. Any city council questions on public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending chapter six, licenses, article 10, theatricals, parades, open air meetings, section 6.1001, license required, section 6.1002, license form, section 6.1003, fee, section 6.1004, penalty for failure to license be deleted in its entirety. We've had the presentation.
We just need a public hearing.
Yeah. First, we have the city council questions. Seeing none would open up the public hearing. See nobody on Zoom, seeing no one rise, closing the public hearing on the ordinance amending chapter six. Are there any additional council questions or deliberations?
Your Honor, I move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 8th, 2025 city council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bagley?
Not discussion, but clarification. When we passed the previous item, we basically created a new guidebook and set of rules, and now we're, all these next ones are just thrown away.
Getting rid of everything we don't need anymore.
Just in case anybody got confused following at home, like, we, the first one was the one with all the meat and potatoes in it. Now these are all just cleaning up because we have new meat and potatoes.
Right.
Correct. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending chapter seven, vehicles, traffic and parking, article one, parking meters, section 7.114, construction permit to be deleted in its entirety.
Your Honor, move to pass second reading and hold.
We have to have a public hearing.
Opening the public hearing.
To the public.
Seeing none, rise, no one on Zoom, closing the public hearing. No further additional council questions?
Your Honor, I now move to pass second reading and hold the third and final reading on the December 8th, 2025 city council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending chapter eight, encumbrances and injurious practices in streets, article one, encumbrances, section 8.101, encumbrances general, section 8.105, digging up a street, section 8.106, license to obstruct street, section 8.114, outings and signs, section 8.120, displaying merchandise on sidewalk be deleted in its entirety. No presentation, as we've already had it. I do not see any questions. Anybody rising for the public hearing? Open now, we'll now close the public hearing. I await a motion.
Your Honor, I move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 8th, 2025 city council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is, we're on to G, right?
Yep.
Yeah, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending chapter nine, article five, public way obstructions, placement and registration, sections 9.501 through 9.511, regarding public way obstructions be deleted in its entirety. No presentation, do not see public, or city council questions? Anyone rising? No one rising for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing. Any additional council questions or deliberations? Wait a motion.
Your Honor, I move to pass the second reading and hold the third and final reading on December 8th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending chapter 11, sidewalks, sewers, layouts of streets, subdivision of land, article six, referrals to planning boards, section 11.602A, number one, referral and report be amended to delete the word license. No presentation? Any additional council questions? Opening the public hearing. Seeing no one rise, no one on Zoom, closing the public hearing. Any additional council questions? I await a motion.
Your Honor, move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 8th, 2025 city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with all of that, just given the amount of conversations that we had on this, and I think good work that we made, we will hold off on third reading until December 8th. I will also simply mention, this is not a, it didn't come up through here, but since we're moving away from the council, council approving these, I think with all, would like to have some policy in the future where any decision made either administratively or through a board is clearly defined, the recourse to appeal that decision and to be delivered upon that decision being made, and if that's something the governance can take up, Counselor, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's what we just passed, a provision for appeal to the city council.
Right, just that it would be enumerated in that decision, that they would be very clear, as we've found with the HDC, if they, just in terms of saying this is exactly, that's administrative, I believe, to be able to, how that appeal would be, but just to make sure people are aware of that right would be, would be great. All right, city manager, Connard, city managers, items that require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up, and thank you to Chief McClellan for sticking around, is the employment, probably of his employment agreement for a two-year term.
I await a motion.
I'll move to approve and accept the employment agreement as presented.
Second.
Any further discussions? Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I really appreciated seeing this contract, and specifically the cost of living adjustment being pegged to the regional average. I have been very public about voting no on two contracts, senior level contracts, in the last year because the cost of living adjustment came in above the regional average, and I was concerned about our taxpayers paying more for contracts than what they're getting in raises. So I really appreciate seeing that in this contract, and I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Any other discussion? Chief McClellan, I am sure if it was earlier in the night, there would be much more effusive praise for the work that you've done on behalf of not only the fire department. praise for the work that you've done on behalf of not only the fire department, but the city of Portsmouth. We are incredibly grateful that we are able to extend the term of which you've been, will be the chief and trust that you will continue to do not only the job that the department expects you to do, but the job that the citizens of Portsmouth depend on you to do. Thank you so much and we look forward, I look forward to voting in favor of this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Similarly, we are pleased to bring forward and thank you Assistant Chief Janay for sticking around, a request for a two-year agreement for his position.
Mayor, I move to approve and accept the employment agreement as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just real quickly, I want to acknowledge the work that the fire department does, but also the involvement they have in government where whenever we have a donation to be approved, whenever there's an item for the fire department, not only is one of the chiefs here, but usually one of the commissioners is here as well. And, you know, we're always encouraging our citizens to get involved, but I want to commend the fire department for, you know, keeping us informed of what they need and when they need it and doing it in a very clear and transparent way.
Certainly agree. Can't imagine anything we voted on the fire department that they haven't been here to see through. Counsel Moreau.
I just wanted to thank both of you for all your work and your efforts and I really appreciate you staying on.
Look forward to a, another great two years Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Jason Janay. We are eternally grateful. Got a chance to get a couple of ride-alongs with Jason in terms of Neighborhood Night Out. Appreciate that there was a little miscommunication and I was almost left very far away from home, so he's a, he's a good man, a better fireman and we appreciate all the work that you continue and will continue to do with us for the next two years. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Noted bill has never left me.
No, no, no. Jason picked me. He filled in the, you know, another, supposed to get a ride to somebody else. All right.
All right, moving on. Approval of the 2026 city council meeting calendar. I had the pleasure of developing this in conjunction with the city clerk and Deputy City Manager for Finance and Administration. We tried to incorporate all the things we understand. What I want to make sure you all know is that we did clear this for all major religious holidays or the start of a religious holiday period and there is one typo, the second meeting in March should be the 16th. It should read March 2nd and 16th.
Not the 2nd and the 1st.
Nope.
I figured, I figured that out.
I'll move to approve the proposed city council meeting calendar for 2026 as presented with that small correction.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number four is a request by the Coast Guard Auxiliary to renew their license to dock their vessel at Prescott Park docks. And long story short, we ask that any renewal be received before November 30th, which they did, but what we're uncertain about is whether, is the status of the repair of the docks and if all the existing slips will be repaired and we're concerned that there may be fewer slips available for residents. So at this time, I would ask that the council grant me the power or the authority to negotiate the terms of any renewal to a license agreement with the Coast Guard Auxiliary if all the existing slips at the dock are repaired and we will provide an update to the council.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate the terms of a lease agreement with United States Coast Guard Auxiliary for the Coast Guard vessel to berth at Prescott Park Dock if all slips are repaired prior to the next season.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Number five is an authorization of the sidewalk license for Nova Cure Inc. Part of the project which brought Nova Cure downtown included the reconfiguration of some of the parking spaces in the Worthlot along with some hardscape improvements and the Worthlot parcel and parcel includes a city sidewalk that now will be required to be maintained, repaired and replaced by Nova Cure. So the request in your packet and the license in your packet includes those obligations and responsibilities from both Nova Cure and the city.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute and deliver the sidewalk license as presented to Nova Cure Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Moreau.
I really enjoy the fact that they're going to take care of the snow and ice, so that makes me very happy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Item number six is a request for, to approve the pilot agreement for Betty's Dream. This is a group home on Long Meadow Road. We have approved, the council has approved this request in previous years and to remind folks of what this is, this is to help defray the cost of municipal nonutility services, they do pay for utilities.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to enter a, into a pilot agreement with Betty's Dream in the amount of $3,000 for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Cook.
I just wanted to thank the city manager and the assessors team for continuing to negotiate this pilot for Betty's Dream because it's an important institution and these taxes are a lot of money for them, so I really do appreciate that effort.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Last action item is a request for Maplewood Avenue Drain Line Project specifically to update you all that, as you know, we're undertaking a sewer separation project to address some of the ways to allow for flow to occur appropriately. The city plans to redirect stormwater beneath Maplewood Ave along the railroad tracks and discharge through a new outfall in the North Mill Pond existing the infrastructure that is undersized and existing now. So the city is requiring authorization from CSX and from Maplewood, 90 Maplewood Avenue LLC, the owner of the Salt Shed property located at 90 Maplewood Ave. The city has reached an agreement with CSX on the terms of a license and has agreed in principle to both temporary and permanent easements with 90 Maplewood Ave LLC. The property owner at 90 Maplewood Ave has conditioned conveyance on the easement, of the easement on the city entering into a boundary line agreement with CSX, which we are anticipating receiving imminently and at that point we will resolve the boundary line issue. And this matter was approved by the planning board at their most recent meeting.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate, accept and record a license from C, CSX, Inc. and an easement from 90 Maplewood Ave LLC in support of North Mill Pond stormwater outfall improvements.
Second.
It's a mouthful.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, city manager. We next have the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've had, first we have presentations and written communications, email correspondence.
Move to accept and move, put on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is a letter from Dean Saramas, Executive Director of the Portsmouth Naval, the Portsmouth Submarine and Maritime Association requesting a zoning change for the Alpecore Park for property located at 569 Submarine Way.
Move to refer to the planning board for report back to city council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We've gotten through the other two presentations. We have appointments to be considered. First, James, Jim Wilson to the Cable and Broadband Internet Commission, appointment of Wendy Courtrier Clement to the Economic Development Commission, appointment of Daniel Finan to the Safe Water Advisory Group and the reappointment of Thomas Neese to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Those will be taken up at the next city council meeting. We do have the appointment of Tara Ricks to the Cemetery Committee.
Your Honor, I move to appoint Tara Ricks to the Cemetery Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Tara, for stepping up. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is a verbal update that we, I will be briefer than I have ever been, hopefully. So we are a part of the Education Coalition Communities 2.0. That has been a focus, our focus has been the litigation that has been ongoing within the state. That litigation is, for the most part, finalized. What is going to be required is being made right now in Concord is how that, how those rulings are going to affect communities like ours, but also communities across the state. What I am asking to be endorsed by the council and I would join the Coalition Communities their November 18th meeting would be if they would be willing to consider expanding the mission to include things that are outside of the current scope of defending simply a, a return to the statewide education property tax, but to consider things as homestead exemptions, the special education funding that is provided by the state and classroom efficiencies so that we can all work to making the classroom as efficient, as focused on the, the student as possible. I will join that and to see if there is a opportunity to expand the mission and if there is not the ability to expand the mission, I personally will begin to question the efficacy of the Coalition's community as we work to a solution on the state level for funding that will very directly impact the city of Portsmouth, but not only the city of Portsmouth, every child across the state and there, there are going to be impacts to those property richer communities that do not take into account that being house-rich does not make you actually rich and we need to start having the conversation of how we're going to equitably fund these and using, if we're going to use the property tax to do that, to make sure that there are exemptions for those that continue to live in their home.
Your Honor, I move to ask the Education Coalition Communities 2.0 and HFKA Coalition 2.0 CC2 at its November 18th, 2025 meeting whether it would consider expanding its mission to include the following education funding issues: homestead exemptions, special education funding and classroom efficiency.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Tabor.
I was hoping that you could clarify, Mayor, the intent around homestead exemptions because homestead exemption covers a lot of things.
Sure. I believe that, at least it's my belief and I hope the Coalition Communities can come to this same conclusion that right now nearly every other state that provides some sort of property tax and most states do provide a homestead exemption. One, our neighbors in Maine certainly do, but to provide a value as we do with a senior and disabled tax exemption that we currently lead the state in, I would like to be able to extend that to other participants or other people that are not a senior or disabled within the city of Portsmouth. This was actually a, this used to be the letter of the law and Portsmouth was the first municipality to enact it in 1972. It was found to be unconstitutional not because it was too broad, but because it was too narrow and it left those homeowners that were at the lower end of the appraisal of their house off of that. We no longer face that issue as Portsmouth. This would be equal across, you know, every, every house in Portsmouth to a certain degree and to be able to apply that, I think is, you know, there are, there is legislation currently pending or before Concord that is speaking to a homestead exemption and would like to be able to throw the weight of the Coalition Communities behind such legislation so that if a statewide education property tax comes back to the city of Portsmouth and the state in large, that we would have mechanisms to make sure those that are already here building a community, those that are living here full-time, year-round, would not be the ones that are shouldering the complete burden of this and to understand that, you know, there are many areas of property owners that do not do as much in the communities as those that actually live here to be able to share the burden more equitably across those. Counsel Moreau.
I guess my only confusion is we have homestead exemptions statutorily in the state that are completely different than anything to do with education, right? It has to do with your home and living in it, but it's really based off of an ownership of a marital couple where it's a marital home. So I guess I don't want to use that because I deal with it in my job every day. I guess using the word homestead might just get confusing, so you might want to just explore other terminology as well and I don't know really what that would be, but I just wouldn't want to get confused with standing homestead exemptions that have existed for a long time.
Sure. I, I believe, and the law that was previously passed in the, in the state of New Hampshire in the 70s was a homestead exemption that looked to reduce the value of one's property in the face of taxation.
And that's not what exists today.
And I will, this I think is more, the colloquial term is every, everybody that's not a lawyer, I think, understands this and so I would like to, I will, I, at such a point to, I guess at such a point that it is a, that we get to, if confusion arises, we will further clarify and provide better language to further define what a homestead exemption is and how it could mean a reduction of the home's value for residents that live here five years or longer as it does with the senior tax exemption and the disabled tax exemption.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all understood.
Your Honor, if I could just follow up for our discussion, you know, I think we have to be careful that if, for example, we have had a, a homestead exemption that froze your home's appraisal at its purchase price until you sold it, a very extreme one, that that would in fact harm the funding of our schools.
So that's Prop 47 in California as you've defined it and I lived in California and saw the effects of the limitations of that and how it pushed the tax burden onto lower income people. We currently have a property tax exemption that pushes the cost of our cities onto, from seniors to lower, or to all other classes of folks here. What I would be proposing is not a value of a cap or cap on the property, simply a reduction in the value of that, much in the same way that we use a senior and disabled tax exemption, but to.
A fixed amount.
A fixed amount that would be extended regardless of age and regardless of income that is dependent upon your ability to, to live in the community for a certain amount of time and obviously if there were, if, you know, this is not, we're not going to write this policy, but what I would like to do is have Portsmouth and the Coalition Communities advocate for such policy that would extend those current benefits that seniors and disabled among our community receive to all members of the community that make Portsmouth their year-long home and have done so for a minimum of five years to benefit from the, not only the act of homeownership, but community building that would defray some of the costs of the statewide education property tax if it is to come back in the form that we expect it I, I was ready not even to answer any questions on this, but I appreciate them, I think it flushed them out. Any other questions? All right. The motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to city council members. City Councilor Cook and Bagley. Oh, yeah, we haven't got to this one yet. All right. Counsel Cook.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Bagley.
Counsel Bagley.
Yes, I'm motioning. I move to request a report back from the city staff and cemetery committee regarding the feasibility and practability of providing green burials as an option in Portsmouth.
Second.
And I'll speak very briefly to this. I want to thank former counselor and Judge John Moore for bringing this to our attention. Essentially, this is a, an old burial practice that is kind of being brought back again. It's much more environmentally friendly than pretty much all other options, including cremation and I think it meets all of the city's goals from a sustainability, land usage and cost perspective and I'm looking forward to the report back.
Also got a chance to talk to him, sounds great and certainly hope we can provide a, a report back if there's any, you know, we don't own a lot of the cemeteries and we'll take an opportunity to tell people that since we get many, many calls asking for space in the cemeteries, but as long as the person that's watching this also watches me saying that, I feel like I will help Joanna Deemer not answer as many phone calls on that, but it is a time well spent to make sure that we can do this in the city of Portsmouth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have this one coming back at the 8th. Appreciate that discussion. Counsel Cook, municipal arts and cultural banner program policy.
Your Honor, I move to approve the draft municipal arts and cultural banner program policy and ask the city manager to report back to the city council on the status of program development three months after passage of this policy.
Second.
And Your Honor, you'll see in your packet, the program policy, it was also in your packet last month for everybody to review. It essentially directs the city manager to establish a program and leaves a lot of leeway for how that is done and that's why we've asked the city manager to report back to the council.
Not on the policy itself or the enactment of the policy, but on the policy?
On the, on the process that she determines with her staff and whatever way she decides to do that, this. to do that, this policy should be implemented, but it, it does provide, the policy itself basically directs the city manager to establish an arts and cultural banner program.
Okay. Follow-up question on to that, this policy would have to be approved by the next council as a council policy?
No, this policy does establish the policy. It puts it all in place, it's just the city manager will set up the guidelines with, in the way that she would like to implement the policy. Because the, the goal of this is to establish arts and cultural banners around the community and to allow for those to occur, but at the same time, they're going to be hung on city light poles, and we have to be very, very cautious about that, because that's city property, and so the city manager makes the decisions with regard to city property and how those things are administered. That's why the city manager will have the authority to establish how this program is administered.
All I was trying to, and I, and I agree with all that, but I just wanted to clarify, at the next council, we will approve all of the policies of the city of Portsmouth, and this will be one of the policies that we approve, because it's a policy
Yes.
Every year.
Yes, it'll come back as, as all the policies do every year, but, but no, we're not, we're not going to be looking at a different one. This is, this is as is.
And so I'm just, for anybody that might have any concerns with this, and I can't see those concerns at the moment, but if they arise, those will be enacted, we'll discuss them as we announce a future policy, city of Portsmouth, but this, smartly by Counselor Cook, puts it in so that we will be having to pull it out rather than putting it in as a part of the, the policy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is Counselor Bagley.
Your honor, I move to accept and approve the action sheet in minutes of the Parking Traffic Safety Committee meeting of November 6th, 2025.
Second.
Really quickly, the, we approved the reduced Woodbury Avenue traffic calming. The construction season's come into a close, the Maplewood Ave new bridge looks great, the lights at Middle Street and Miller are in place, and construction continues at Russell Street, and then I'm glad to see Attorney Farini is still here, there is a few new members on PTS, and we're, we're asking for her to attend a future meeting and give us some guidance on where our preview starts and ends. We had some interesting requests about driveway, and we weren't really sure what we should or should not consider when we decided to, to vote on approving a driveway.
Great. I'm sure Attorney Farini is thrilled that she stayed. And I would agree that the, wait, is that seconded?
Yep.
Did you make, it was seconded?
Okay.
And the Maplewood Bridge, there will have a, it will be able to support on both sides, a snow, or a sidewalk plow on the sides?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Happiest days. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your honor, I move that the city council authorize a downtown holiday parking programming, offering three free hours of free parking in all city-owned parking garage beginning on Monday, December 15th, 2025, the start of Hanukkah, through Thursday, January 1st, 2026, to promote holiday spirit, support downtown businesses, and encourage community activity during the holiday season.
Second.
I think this one's kind of self-explanatory.
It is, and it's similar to what we've done in previous years to
Since we had those hours, since we had that hours and hours-long conversation about it, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have the acceptance of donation from Flatbread Portsmouth for the Portsmouth Police Explorer Program in the amount of $687.50.
Move to accept the donation as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Flatbread. Acceptance of unsolicited cash donation from an anonymous passerby to support the Portsmouth Police Department in the amount of $100.
I move to accept the donation as presented.
Second.
This is going down in the polls.
Are we sure?
I guess they've just, somebody threw some money at them. All right, well, we have the donation policy, so somebody, maybe on camera or not, gave them some, some cash. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City manager informational items.
I will go quickly. As you know, we give, we offer monthly financial summary reports for the period of July through May, and what is in your packet is an example of what we will publish for financial fiscal year-end, and the goal is to provide this after the auditor's fieldwork is completed, and so what you see before you is what you can expect to see on or about November 15th every year moving forward, and thank you Nathan Lunny for pulling this together. Item number two is Resident Access Parking Program Update. This was a request initially made by Counselors Cook and Bagley. Our staff is making great progress toward a pilot program which emphasizes access, prioritizing access to parking for all residents. We will be ready in, to explain in great detail at the December 8th meeting, we will have a small presentation, we're excited to bring that to you then. There were three items of interest at the October 21st P's Development Authority Board meeting. First, we had an audit presentation by our outside auditor Barry Dunn. We received a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest possible opinion, no adjustments, no deficiencies. That was wonderful. A fun fact, at the P's Airport, during the federal government shutdown, the air traffic control tower saw no operational impacts and remained fully staffed as their Department of Defense employees. And number three, the Portsmouth Fish Pier out on Pierce Island finally saw the return to all the commercial fishermen, the return of their rights of entry, the return of their bait coolers for their use, and the return of bulk fuel pumps. And fourth is an item in your packet, we've done this before, this is Water Service Line Public Notification. We have to provide annual updates to New Hampshire DES, and so there are still a small percentage of water services for which we do not understand what the material is, and so we are just complying with federal and state regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Any miscellaneous?
I guess I would just like to say that the porta-potties that were mentioned during public comment by Police Commissioner Fernal were the result of four hours of a temporary water shutdown while we sourced a problem leak. So they were provided at 8:00 AM, the water was restored by noon on Saturday, it's just a matter of having them picked up, so this was not a temporary or an ongoing issue, merely a small maintenance issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification.
City manager, nothing under miscellaneous?
Your honor, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, sure. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.